I'd like to call the meeting to order. We have a quorum being present. Some announcements I'll make, some procedures. People are still filing in to give them a chance to come in. The tellers for tonight are going to be Wendy Foss, Rebecca Jones, Rob Thicke-Gibson, and Diane Johnson. Could y'all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a seat, please. I've verified that the warrant has been posted in all the right places, so that's out of the way. I'll take a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Is there a second? All those in favor? So, voting tonight, if you are a registered voter, you've got a card on the way in. So, we're going to do holding up the cards on votes. If you do not have a card, you should be sitting over there on the left. So, everybody in the chairs in the rows, everyone's got a card registered? Yes? Awesome. Who's jogging? She's talking. If we have a special, I mean, a secret ballot for some reason, we'll go through the procedures at the time. Basically, you're going to bring your card up, put an X on the back, you get a yes and a no, tear off up here, put your vote in the box, and throw the auto away, and go back to your seat and sit down, and we'll move forward from there. I've been told a couple times now that, I can't hear if there's small conversations going on out there, but people can't hear. The acoustics aren't spectacular in here. Some people don't always get right to the mic, but if you could hold your conversations down, or even none at all, that makes it easier. We can move forward and go pretty fast. That would be very, very helpful in moving along. If you're going to speak to an article, we have four microphones that'll get turned on depending on where you are. If you're going to speak, please go ahead of time. Once the motion and the second and someone has discussed the motion, if you're going to speak to it, please get to a microphone. Then I can see people that are going to be speaking to the article, and then we can move things along. We have 43 articles. I know some might be postponed, but we have 43 articles. There's a good chance this is going to go to tomorrow night. So, trying to... Hold on one second. It's become apparent that we're going to run out of seats right here. So, if I can get everyone in their seats to pull all their seats as far forward as we can, then I think we can open the bleachers up, if that works for everybody. So, let's take a minute to do that, so we don't get delayed a little further. Can I have your attention for... We really, if, we need to get everyone outside in this room, or we're going to have to postpone this meeting tonight. So, if we can't get everyone that's in the hallway in this room, we're going to postpone this to another night. Like, right now. Everyone has to be in this room that's out in the hallway. So, if we, we have to move everyone, it's going to be tight, but if we want to go tonight... Right. It's kind of like church. Everyone move up.
I don't think, I don't think the entirety of the front row is...
There's a bunch of seats right up front here. That's sound. Open those doors, there's a room in there. There's 20 seats. Yeah, he's the weak link, right? Yes. Charlie always knows. Yeah, yeah. Well, if it makes him, if it makes him feel any better, he may be getting... When they're teenagers?
She's already fixed us.
Yeah. That is very funny, but, you know, I know that, like, live TV viewers, and, like, if I take you to the... There's going to move. Do you know how long it's going to take? I'll let it slide, so now I can find my... Now, it's not my job. I get seats. And I told them, like, we might not be ready. You need to pull out forward to open that. Yeah, I mean, that's right. Because it is not required to be livestreamed and/or even videoed for that matter, and so, yeah, and that's what would be preventing us from... I'll just move the meeting. I'm going to plug it in. That's your... I didn't say that. And I can open, I'll hold it. Okay. Yeah, nobody wants to be affected, they might get called on. They're fit. So... There's all kinds of open chairs. I'm sorry. It's okay. So, there's all kinds of open chairs? Yeah.
But you opened the meeting, it was around 6:50. Are we considered to be open? And now we're just waiting? Okay.
There are seats up front here. If you want a seat, come up here. Let's move, got to move things along here. I can't hide? We have a card. Everyone's got a card.
So, do we normally just put, like, one on this end, the box, and one on that end?
Yep. There are seats up front. If you're looking for a seat, there's a bunch up here. Everybody's in. Just a couple of updates. For those that weren't here, I already ran through all the proceeds, some of the procedures. We have, because of the number, we have three different cards. So, there's a yellow, there's a red, and a green. As long as everyone has a card, we're good. Everybody have a card that needs a card? Excellent. If you are a non-voter, you are not registered, not a resident of town, you're over here, except for, we have Pam, who's the superintendent, we have Brendan, the town administrator, and we have Greg Corbo, town council. They speak typically for us if there's questions or anything like that. If you are a non-resident and you want to speak, you would have to get leave from the meeting, and we ask for a vote. I'm also going to ask for the, I know there's a lot of people in this room, to keep the chatter amongst yourselves to a minimum, so everyone can hear. The acoustics in this room are very difficult. It was designed as a gym, not an auditorium. I know, because my father designed it. So, without any further ado, we're going to go right to Article One. Before that, I guess I should mention, with the 43 articles, there is a better-than-average chance that we will be moving this again tomorrow night. Keeping in mind that if we go to another night, or anytime tonight, any article that was voted can be reconsidered, even tomorrow night, for something that was voted on tonight. So... Article One. Is this on?
Article One. I, Alvin Gahero, move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a surveyor of bark and lumber.
Is there a second? Any discussion, Alva?
Not really. It's just something that's part of Massachusetts, and I checked a few towns, and everybody puts this on Article One.
Awesome. All those in favor of Article One, raise your cards. All those opposed? The motion passes. Article Two.
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town receive the reports of the town officials, boards, and commissions, or committees contained in the annual town report.
Is there a second? Discussion, Peter?
No discussion.
All those in favor of Article One, two, raise your card, please. All those opposed? The motion passes. Article Three.
I, Ruth Arperine, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $33,294 to fund and implement a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Essex Police Association, Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Local 270 International Union of Police Association, AFL-CIO.
Is there a second? Discussion, Ruth? Any discussion? All those in favor of Article Three, raise your card, please. All those opposed? The motion passes. I'm going to repeat the, if you want to speak to an article, please stand to a mic, so I know that someone's going to be speaking to the articles. That makes things move a lot faster. Sir?
I move that Article 26 be considered before Article Seven.
Do you want to, you want to do it now? You want to?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the motion is to move Article 26 to before Four. Is there a second? All those in favor of moving Article 26 to right now, ahead of time? Raise your card. All those opposed? The motion passes. We will reconsider, we will consider 26 right now. Article Twenty-Six.
I, Ruth Arperine, move that the town vote to authorize Robert C. Coviallo and Susan Coviallo, the owners of 44 Main Street, and/or their successors or signees, to purchase up to 3,170 additional gallons per day of sewer capacity beyond the 550 gallons per day currently allotted to the property, in accordance with Section 7-7.5 of the Town of Essex bylaws, subject to the granting of a building permit for the construction of a mixed-use building with first-floor commercial space and up to 32 bedrooms, and subject to the restriction in favor of the town, acting by and through the Board of Selectmen, that some or all of the units be occupied by at least one person 55 years of age or older. Said restriction to be compliant with federal, state, and local laws, and such other terms and conditions on the use of the property as the Board of Selectmen or sewer commission sees fit to impose.
Is there a second? Discussion, Ruth?
No discussion from me, but I'm guessing that the developer might be here to discuss.
Discussion right here. If you're going to, like I said, if you're going to speak, come up to a mic so I can see that we're going to have a discussion. I think you were...
This is on, yes?
No. So this is, this is the attorney?
I'm a legal representative of the corporate entity that's subject to this.
I'm getting that. I'm getting it. So, we need leave of the meeting for someone that is not a registered voter to speak. He happens to represent the Costellos, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, if we want to allow this gentleman to speak, we need a positive vote. So all those in favor of allowing him to speak, raise your card. All those opposed, you are welcome to speak, sir.
Thank you. For those taking notes, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions with an address of 123 Main Street in Gloucester. I represent the Costellos. They are under agreement to purchase the property. This is one small step in a long permitting process. I want to make clear at the outset that the vote tonight is simply about allowing the Costellos to purchase additional sewer capacity. Any positive vote tonight does not authorize the project in whole. We have to go to the Planning Board for a special permit. We'll have to go to Conservation Commission for an order of conditions. Tonight is about, if we are successful in that effort, being able to tie the building to the town sewer, because it'll be up to 16 units and up to 32 bedrooms. That goes beyond the Board of Public Works and comes to town meeting before anyone has the permission to buy that additional capacity. We're not asking for any break in the amount charged. We're paying the full price if allowed to do so. Again, this is just to allow this proposed project to tie in. That being said, the proposed project, as discussed, is for a mixed-use building. There'll be commercial retail on the lower level facing Main Street, and there'll be up to 16 residential units above and behind that commercial use. This property, again, will be subject to further vetting. However, we have already negotiated a potential restriction that we are willing to make a condition of even tonight's vote, that the housing in the mixed-use building would be restricted to occupants of 55 years or older. So basically creating senior housing here in the downtown of Essex. I'll leave it at that for now, and we hope we'll be able to provide this facility to the town and get that connected to the sewer once constructed. Thank you.
Lisa, over here.
Lisa O'Donnell, Island Road. I'm speaking as the chair of the Planning Board. I'm not speaking to the article. I wanted to provide context around the scale of this project, because it would be a mixed-use project that has more than four residential units. It would require a special permit from the Planning Board, and as part of that process, there's a public hearing. So there's an opportunity for people to come to our public hearing and weigh in, and the Planning Board ultimately will write a special permit that allows a use like with more than four residential units in it. So I just wanted to be clear that this is voting on sewage and not the project, and that's a whole nother step. So that's all.
Are you with them? Any other discussion over here?
Hello? Okay.
Can I, name and address, please?
Yes. My name's Tony Bevelacqua, and I live at Forty Main Street. Okay, I wrote a little thing with my wife, Alicia. I just want to read this out so I can stay on track. I'm Tony Bevelacqua, and my wife, who I wrote this, who wrote this with me, is Alicia Cornwell. We live at Forty Main Street, which many of you have known for years as Essex Radio and TV Repair. A lot of you here probably knew my grandparents, John and Betsy Bevelacqua, and I'm sure a lot of you know my mom and dad, Arthur and Linda. For three generations and almost 70 years, the Bevelacques have been directly across Burnham Court from the proposed project at Forty-Four Main Street. We're asking you to vote no with us on Article Twenty-Six. We know that change is inevitable, and we don't fear change. What we want to see is change done right in our neighborhood and for the town at large. Instead of change done right, what we're being confronted with is plans for a giant three-floor structure with 16 two-bedroom units and an unnecessary underground parking garage that will accommodate 37 parking spaces directly next to our house. This is completely inappropriate for the site and for Essex in general. The scale of what is currently being proposed has no equal in Essex. The developers are wrapping this proposed project in a benevolent rosy image of meeting housing needs when their main motivation is clearly millions of dollars in profit. The truth is, it simply does not need to be this big. We're especially concerned about blasting for an underground parking garage that would be going on only 33, only 30 feet from our 175-year-old house. There is nothing the town can do to protect our home and property from harm as this goes on. We would be at the mercy of the developer and his contractors. Like everyone else in Essex, we can't afford potential structural damage to our home, in which our family's history and our entire personal and working life is invested.
What's the point? He's still concerned about the property, so...
Can I finish?
Yes, you may.
With the proposed structure reaching from Main Street almost down to the shipbuilding museum, this building would be larger even than the brewery at over 11,000 square feet per floor. This number of new residents with cars in one small area will cause a remarkable increase in traffic on a very narrow Burnham Court, with the planned 37 cars coming and going day and night, turning out onto a very busy Route 133. Just on our side of Burnham Court, we'd be confronted by a giant wall of 39 windows, nine balconies, and a parking garage entrance staring into our house daily, according to the proposed drawings. Does this sound like Essex? We would expect this scale and density in Boston, but not here. We want to impress upon our fellow voters that this sewer capacity vote is our one and only opportunity to stop the project at its currently proposed scale. There are no takebacks, just like the brewery project. If the sewer capacity is approved, a large development will be built here, and we'll be stuck whatever happens for generations. We'll not be able to express regret and revisit it later. After tonight's vote, we as town residents will have little opportunities to vote on or influence other aspects of this project. Additionally, this will reduce our ability as a town to approve other appropriately scaled housing projects that may come up in the future. What we're asking is simply that the developer make a little less money by scaling back the project to something that the existing neighbors can live with and that the town's allotted resources can better address. We ask for smaller buildings, no underground parking, and more green space to preserve the neighborhood's character. We want to be very clear that we welcome new neighbors and new housing at a more appropriate scale. If you too are concerned and unhappy with the proposed scale of this development, we ask you to please join us in voting no on Article Twenty-Six. Thank you.
Through the discussion?
Tom Daniel, 27 Pond Street. My question, the article, or the article speaks to potential affordable housing restriction. I understand the developers agreed to an age restriction. I'm just trying to get some clarity on what that affordable housing restriction would be and what that process would be for it being imposed. I understand that this is about the sewer, but the affordability, just like the senior aspect of it, I think is important.
Just for clarification, the motion didn't include affordable, only the article?
The article references subsequent...
Sure.
Right. So I'm just trying to get clarity around what that process would be around the affordable housing restriction in the subsequent permitting?
I guess we're going to let Joel speak to that?
Context of, thank you. For the context of tonight's vote, we have agreed to allow the condition of the age restriction. There is no affordability component built in tonight's vote. If the town through its Planning Board, you know, wanted to continue that conversation, it would be had at the special permit stage. But right now, the concession was to put it as a senior housing project for tonight's vote, any condition that would come with it.
I think his question was, what would the process be for affordable housing?
Right. So is it through the Planning Board? That's what I'm trying to...
Yes, through the Planning Board.
Is that, I just want the Planning Board chair, I'm looking for the Planning Board chair, to say yes.
Greg was, there's a microphone here, Greg, if you want to use that right here. This is Greg Corbo.
Hello? There we go. Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening. I'm Greg Corbo, Town Council. And the question is, you know, what would the process be for granting this restriction? So this is not a zoning issue. It's not a permitting issue, but rather this would be an agreement between the developer and the town that the town will have an interest in the, in the property recorded with the deed that says that the property can only be used by residents who are 55 years of age and over, and subject to whatever other restrictions that go along with that. Right now, you're not voting on including an affordable housing restriction. It's only the age restriction. And typically what happens is that there's a monitoring agent that's appointed that has to go through, and there are procedures from the state that talk about how you monitor that this restriction is being complied with.
Thank you. My question, though, still hasn't been answered. You, I'm trying to understand in the negotiation between the town and the developer where an affordable housing restriction is done. Is that by the Board of Selectmen? Is that at this Planning Board through the special permitting process? I understand the agreement has already been reached around age restriction. My question is about an affordable housing deed restriction that's implied as a potential subsequent step in this project.
It's not, it's not in the motion, so it's not something to discuss on the motion?
Yes, I understand it's not in the motion. I'm just trying to get clarity around the process, and since there's a big crowd of people here that could understand...
Would that be through the Planning Board and special permit to put restriction like that on, or no?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So, the deed restriction is something that was negotiated between the developer and the select board. The special permit process is completely separate, and that will be dealt with at the time. So the only question here is, you know, are you in favor of granting sewer access for this project, subject to the deed restriction for 55 and over, negotiated by the Board of Selectmen?
Right. I understand that's what's before the body. My question about how the process for an affordable housing restriction is done has still not been answered by that remark or anybody else. I'm just trying to get clarity on it, but...
What's that? So the answer, if it doesn't happen in this process, it most likely will not come up to be affordable.
If it doesn't happen in the process tonight, you mean?
Correct.
Okay. So despite the article stating that subsequent, I don't have it in front of me, but everybody else has it open, that talks about an affordable housing restriction, that is not something that's contemplated, is continuing, or being effectuated after tonight? Is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay. Then I'm not sure why it's included in the language of the article.
Because the article typically sets out all the processes that could happen. The motion then determines how it's going to be.
Okay. So, all right. Thank you for that clarity.
Betsy Ridge, Soganese Road. The earlier speaker alluded to the brewery and that sewer problem, and I think that I'm really concerned about this article, because while it says an additional capacity, it doesn't say what the additional capacity might be. There's no limit, and I don't know what it would be, but I'm really worried about having something that close to the head of the river that is going to put sewer right there. It is on town, but it's very close to the river, and I'm concerned that there's no limit there. So I would turn this down.
Jody, I'm sorry, Anne was up. Danny?
Hi, Annie Cameron, Pickering Street. The language that was read is...
Annie, can I, can I give you one second? I want to address a comment that was made.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just as a point clarification, the motion would be to allow the property owner to purchase up to 3,170 additional gallons of sewer capacity a day beyond the 550 gallons per day currently allotted. So there is a maximum here of, and it is stated in your motion book.
Thank you, Greg. Annie?
Yeah. So I guess I had questions because the language that was read is significantly different than what we have in our books, and I'm not sure that I'm missing a page that has...
You're reading the article in the warrant?
Yeah.
Yes, the motion can be different.
It can be, but I don't know if everyone heard all the details, so I was wondering if we could kind of break down the details, which are the capacity that you just talked about, 55 plus, and then 32 bedrooms. Is that, like, those are the bullet points, correct?
Right. Well, the 3170 plus with the current, I believe, stipulates that gets them to their 16 units with 32 bedrooms. It's 110 gallons per bedroom per day.
Right.
That's where they got to that number, I believe.
And this is just a clarifying question. Are all of those components absolutes, or are they fungible? Do you know what I mean? Like, does it have to be 32? Because I don't, I'm wondering if, how absolute all of that is.
So, may I, Mr. Moderator?
You can answer. Go ahead.
So these are up-to limits? These are maxims? So for instance, if through the Planning Board process, or through the Conservation Commission process, change had to be made, it does not hit the full 32 and the full 16 units, those 32-bedroom 16 units. We would not have to go back to town meeting to get a reduction. However, we could not exceed the bedroom count and the gallon count without going back to town meeting for the same type of request. So there's the upper limit, but there is, to a degree, there's flexibility. It's the flexibility downward, not in excess of the maximum that is being voted on this evening.
Sure, and I just want to be clear that we're not just voting on sewer capacity. You're also voting on those other two components, which is 55 plus for one person in the household and 32 bedrooms, not to exceed 32 bedrooms.
That's restricted by flow. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Brendan had a comment before we go on?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to say that if something lesser is approved eventually through the building permit process, the town sewer regulations don't allow the additional sewer flow to stay as viable for the property. It will snap to whatever the development is.
Jody Harris, 21 R. Spring Street. I guess my question is, what do we have for sewer capacity currently? What percentage of this is using, being used for our available sewer capacity? I guess that's my first question.
I was going to, I want to see if they did DPDW, but Brendan's up, so I think Brendan... Brendan, go ahead.
So in the agreement with the city of Gloucester, the Town of Essex is allowed to flow 225,000 gallons per day. We do have a limitation because it's not our sewer treatment plant. There's 16,600 gallons per day that is set aside for future municipal use. Right now, there are 638 parcels connected to the sewer system out of 848 parcels that possibly could connect. Right now, the average, the 638 connections produce an average of about 86,000 gallons per day. There'd be about 210 connections left, and if you take an average flow of about 135 gallons per day of actual flow that we observe, that's around 30,000 gallons more that will be needed for people that are not connected. So at this point, if you add all that together, it comes to just over 136,000 versus the 225 that we're allowed, provides that there's probably 80, about 88,000 unused. And if you take off 50,000 as a safety, there's still 38,000 gallons that are available. So there is plenty of sewer flow available for this project should the town meeting choose to grant it.
Good.
Okay. And part two is, what is the acreage on this parcel, and how many square feet are we talking about building, and what's the differential between what's there now and what you're proposing? I know you're proposing 32 bedrooms. I think it probably has a betterment and a half currently, but I'm not sure, so I'm asking the question. And what's the management plan for traffic so that the site isn't congested, because it is an incredibly dangerous corner?
Do you want to address that? Do you want to address that?
So with all due respect, a lot of those questions are going to be vetted out at the planning board process and we only get to that planning board process if we're able to ensure that sewer is available. I'm pulling through the plan set to see if I can get you some of those answers, but like a lot of the, you know, there'll be a traffic discussion held at planning, you know, we have a parking plan shown in the plans that have been submitted so far. What I can say with regards to the size of the proposed building, and for anyone who watched the demolition delay process go through, we went through a lot of historic atlases, and so the coverage in the lot, although more than what is there now, is going to be, although greater, in line with some of the previous iterations of what had been there with the multiple buildings, the barns, et cetera. What I will say is that the plan that's been proposed needs no zoning relief, so we're meeting all setbacks, all height maximums, all parking requirements, all dimensional requirements. So the degree that's concerned about if we allow this sewer, will something quote-unquote "too big" or "too dense" come in? My answer would be that per your zoning bylaws, including the mixed-use bylaw that you have now, we meet all of those. We're not too big, too tall, too near a street. The rest of the details, I respectfully prefer to defer out to the planning board process just because I'm not prepared to speak, you know, in detail on the traffic flow, et cetera, tonight. We're just trying to get the sewer flow settled.
So you don't know the parcel acreage?
It's kind of beyond the purview here. Anything that's going to be stipulated is going to come from the planning board and zoning. Think, you up here?
Steve Poole, this 156 R. Eastern Avenue. Would you like to move the question?
I've got two people waiting already. That's why I have people stand at the mic so I can tell. I'm going to say no at this time, so we have two people ready, plus Lisa.
I just wanted to say it's .54 acres.
Ed?
People commonly complain that we don't have zoning in Essex. There's numerous proposals in front of you tonight for other measures adding to our zoning. But we do have zoning and additionally, we have this sewer restriction. And the sewer restriction gives you folks the ultimate authority in this case to limit what is going to occur on this parcel. To put it in perspective, this lot is in the downtown district, okay? And so under the provisions of this downtown district, you can convert to a three or a four or more unit, housing unit, with a special permit from the planning board. 200 yards up the street, which is outside of the downtown district, 10,000 square feet per dwelling unit is required. So if this lot was outside of the downtown zoning district, two or three lot buildings would be all it would be, two or three units would be all that would be allowed. If you folks vote tonight, yes, to give, grant them what they're asking, that sends a very strong message that you support this 16-unit development to the planning board. And nobody from the planning board stood up and said, "There's no way we would approve a special permit with 16 units on this lot downtown." So if you don't think that this would be a good unit, a good development project for Essex, vote no tonight and you'll be assured that that level of density will not occur. So I'm going to vote against it. Otherwise, what's the point of having these zoning bylaws? You can just waive them. And that's what it boils down to. Other projects outside of this district, without the likelihood of getting, or the ability to get a special permit with the leniency of the planning board, couldn't anticipate anything like this. I don't think it's necessary. I think that that lot can be developed tastefully, financially, economically, good for the current owners and the developer, within the restrictions that currently exist. Thank you.
I'm going to have John. John hasn't spoken yet.
John Guerin at Belter Street. Ed just hit on some of the things I was going to say. The downtown zoning district allows for this large development, 16 units. The MBTA 3A zoning allows for this number of units. And the only way to stop this, if you don't want to see 16 units and three stories in the center of town, is tonight, in my opinion. I don't think the special permit granting is something you leave outside. This is a decision you can make tonight whether it happens or not. The state passed the accessory dwelling unit law also, that every one of, every lot owner in this town has the ability, with setback requirements only, to put in up to 900 square feet, could be a two-bedroom, could be attached to your house, but it's an accessory dwelling unit that we're all required or all have the ability to do. If we eat up flow, regardless of how much they say we have, it could restrict others' ability to be able to tie into the sewer in the future. Currently...
I'm just going to let him finish.
Currently, the applicant has the ability to buy 1,000 gallons without coming to town meeting. He's looking for an additional flow above and beyond that for 16 units. With the 550 he has at 110 gallons a day per bedroom, he could still get 14 bedrooms or seven units out of the building. If we allow 16 units to go in there, the affordable housing question before is going to put us in the negative. We're required to have 10% of our housing to be affordable, or we can be just like Ipswich in Manchester, opened up to a 40B requirement where they can come in and ignore all the zoning laws and say, "You don't have enough affordable housing." We're going to slim it all in and force it down our throats. This is going to put us at 16 units, 10% further in the hole, 1.6 units than we are now. So there is a negative effect on the affordable housing, the 10% requirement. I believe if you don't deal with this tonight and 1,000 gallons was put on town bylaw originally, that anybody can go. I can go buy 1,000 gallons without coming to town meeting. But if you want this much gallons, this board, this board, the whole town meeting decides whether we want this thing or we don't. Otherwise, all the requirements are met. This is the only way, in my opinion, that this, if you don't want it there, the only way you can stop it. I'm not, this isn't any reflection on the builder. I think you could do a great job. Whatever this town meeting decides, I'm not fearful about what it'll look for. I feel bad for the neighbor. I feel bad for the people on Burnham Court that are going to be looking at a 50-foot tall wall, what was originally designed. It may change, but in any event, I said my piece.
So just to speak to the point about accessory dwelling units, accessory dwelling units are not allowed by the sewer use ordinance in Essex. So despite the fact that the state has stated that accessory dwelling units are by code allowed, in the town of Essex, based on our sewer use ordinance with Gloucester, separated dwellings on a single property are not legally allowed to be connected to the sewer. So just a point to make, it's not correct.
Okay. I'm going to go up here.
It's attached, it's...
Tom Daniel, Pond Street. And I'm not speaking in opposition to the project. What I'm speaking about is the missed opportunity to actually provide some deed-restricted affordable housing units. So I would hope that in future deliberations between the Board of Selectmen and developers, that the prioritization of deed-restricted affordable units would be at the forefront. We have an Affordable Housing Trust from board, there's a housing production plan. I think just about everybody in this room can testify to the fact at how expensive housing is in Essex, and this is an opportunity to actually create a couple affordable housing units. To that end, since this is the night where that decision would be made, I'm offering an amendment to the motion that no fewer than two of the units would be deed-restricted at 60% of the area median income.
I'll need that in writing if it's a motion?
It's a motion.
Is there a second to that? I need that in writing.
Okay.
Yep, here. So the motion, the two amend is to add two affordable units, is that correct?
No, fewer, at least two.
Okay, you're choosing to write that. So there was a second discussion on the amendment to add the minimum of two affordable housing units in addition to the 55-plus resident requirement. Any discussion on that?
I am on the Affordable Housing Trust, kind of as a watchdog about how the town spends their money. That's the reason I got on that board. But because of the requirements that we have, this is a bargaining chip. And we're bargaining and potentially this vote or this amendment would say, "We'll give you the extra flow, but guess what? You've got to give us two affordable units." So we're saying, "That's what it's going to cost you. If you want this flow, that's what it's going to cost you." So I'm in favor of this amendment. I think it's a good thing for the town. It doesn't make us go in the negative, even if he gets the 16 units.
Any other discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending the, I mean, in favor of the amendment to Article 26, raise your card.
No, we're leaving, nothing's coming off. We have 55-plus is going to stay and the motion is to no fewer than two affordable housing units at 60% AMI.
Yeah, area median income.
Okay. It's added to a restriction, if it's passed, it's added to the restriction on giving them flow. Further discussion?
And I would add that the Community Preservation Act provides funding that the town meeting could award to support the creation of those affordable units if the developer so chose to bring that forward. So there are resources and tools available to help us get some affordable units.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Moderator, if I may, on behalf of the applicant.
Okay.
At the 16 we're talking about, the two is not necessarily objectionable. I'd like to have the amendment rephrased as a percentage, or whatever that is. So again, if this does cycle down to something smaller, we don't want, you know, two out of 16 is one set of, is one set of, you know, economics. Two out of eight is a very different set of economics, especially at 60% AMI. So if the amendment maker would be willing to revise the amendment to be the percentage, whatever the percentage two of 16 is, that's 1/8, right? So .125, you know...
That's up, it's up to him. He made a motion, if he doesn't want to, he doesn't have to?
Yeah, so I would amend to 10% of the units and everything's rounded up. So if it comes out at 1.2, it's two. If it comes out at .9, it's one.
Thank you.
So I'll change that.
Yes. What's the point of order? Go ahead.
This gentleman's already spoken more than twice. The town gave him permission to speak and explain the project. Now, we've had an amendment, and now we're having an amendment to an amendment proposed by this gentleman that was given the privilege to speak. And what this has evolved into is a negotiation of the conditions under which the town would grant these approvals. I don't think that's proper, Mr. Moderator.
This is kind of how negotiations work if we're the negotiating body at the time. So we're going to work through these amendments. So, original Article 26 was just with 55 plus. There was an amendment on the floor, a seconded, that added to minimum of two affordable units and 60 AMI, which he is removing his, in his second amendment to the amendment, removing the 60% item and adding no fewer than two units and replace with minimum of 10% with rounding up of any fractional units.
It's not removing the 60%, it's removing the units.
Sorry about that. He did not put that 60% in there. He's leaving the 60% AMI as the requirement. All he's, all he's removing is no fewer than two units and replacing it with 10%, minimum of 10% with rounding up to the fractional unit. So if it's .9, it goes to one, if it's .5, it goes to two. Is there a second to that amendment? Discussion on that amendment?
Discussion?
No discussion on that? All those, John, you speaking to the second amendment?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm actually not going to vote in favor of the second amendment because if I'm going to be bargaining a big amount of sewer flow for a large development, I want something for it. And that something is more than 10%, which is the minimum required for the town anyhow. So if you want to amend it to 15%, I'm okay with that, but I don't want to do a one-for-one. I'm going to vote, and then I'm going to vote negative on the main motion if that doesn't get changed.
So the second amendment to the first amendment, all those in favor of taking out minimum and adding 10%, rounding up fractionally, please raise your card. All those opposed? The amendment fails. We're back to this first amendment.
Which was?
The two, two units plus the 60% AMI. That was the original amendment to Article 26. Is there any discussion on that? No fewer than two affordable housing units at 60% AMI. That was the first amendment. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of amending Article 26, raise your card. All those opposed? It's got to be majority and I am in doubt. I need the tellers, please.
Are we doing the, am I going to go sit down?
You might as well sit for a bit. No, the motion, the motion was the 55 plus added instead of affordable. It's not going to be in the area. It's not going to be... It was in the, in the R., it was affordable. Or any other. Do you have tellers? So can we get the tellers? We're going to have a count. So we have four tellers. I'm going to start, we're going to do that, that one and that one first, and then we'll go to the middle. So how are we going to do the vote? People over here, raise your card if you are in favor of the first amendment. So we covered them. Everyone in favor of amending Article 26, please raise your card. And hold it up there so they can count it. Keep your cards up if you're voting in favor. Is someone counting in the middle? So they're all set. Oh, Vicki's counting, Vicki's counting. So if we see this 4/3. In the middle, keep your cards up if you're rest. From the middle and over here, keep your cards up, please. Might switch hands if it's getting heavy. Someday we might do the clicker.
Yeah. We can let them, but honestly, I found it's.
Is that a 20?
Yeah. That's one thing where.
One just. Oh my gosh.
The easy way to do it is like you pull it start in the middle and work your way like this.
Put them down. Yep. Now I need a no count. I need a no count now. You ready? Okay. All those opposed to the amendment, please raise your card.
You've got 227 for yes.
Okay. Well, that's. Motion goes now for. Keep your cards up if it's a no. I think you guys can probably sit down. So we just need the bleachers, is that it?
No, the bleachers.
Okay. So we're done? 106?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. You can put your cards down. The amendment passes, which will add the two affordable units with a minimal fracture. So that amendment passes with a majority vote. 227 to 106. We're going to move to the main article now that it has the affordable unit plus the five, 55-plus added to it. So discussion on the main article with the amendment. I'm going to start right over here.
Yeah. Okay. I want to make three quick points. One of them is to address Mr. Costello's unwillingness to speak on the scale of this new project as compared to what is there currently. I think it's really important that everyone here knows, if you haven't seen the plans online, that this proposed structure is absolutely enormous.
I think we're going to stick to flow, not the zoning part of it.
Yeah. I mean, that's, that's an important.
As far as the questions go, we're getting the discussion, we're going to stick to the flow, not the aesthetics.
No, it's not, it's not the aesthetics. It's the enormous size of it and the number of people that will be living there that will be using this flow needs to be taken into account. And the other, the other thing I want to bring up is we don't want to just kick this down the road to the planning board. This, this is our night to say no if you don't want to see this happen. We are not going to get to vote as residents like we are now when this goes to the planning board. Tonight is our night to vote. That, that's it. And, you know, if we just let this happen, like I said before, we're going to be stuck, whatever's put in there for generations, just like the brewery. Once this thing goes in, it's not going anywhere. We're stuck with it. And the other thing I just want to sort of ask is like, why we're not hearing from Mr. Costello himself? Why are we just hearing from his attorney? I'll leave it at that.
You don't need to answer that. Gentlemen right here?
Yeah. Would it be appropriate to move question seven to after question 26?
I can't entertain that while we're doing this motion.
Perfectly fine that I move the previous question.
I have one more comment.
I feel like I, can we vote on moving the previous question?
I'm going to have, one more comment and then we're done.
Hi. Kathy Pinoyer, Grove Street, Essex. Big picture here, we got derailed by the amendments. If we vote.
What's the point? And don't just yell it out. I didn't recognize the speaker to make a motion, she was standing. Right. We had people's talking. So we're going to finish up with over here, and then we can move to the question.
The big picture is that if we vote yes, we open the door to a big development. We open that door and you can't close it. I would opt to vote at a further date for less sewer allotment, meaning that the town will have control, we as a people will have control over what goes in that space. It's a beautiful space, it's on a river, and it's historic. Voting no today gives you a voice in what goes in in the future. Voting yes today gives you no voice because once that planning process and takes hold, it's, there's very little option for us en masse to be heard. And so I urge you to vote no today and give yourselves a voice in the future.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of Article 26, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion fails. Article four. I got, I wore my good vest. Can we have quiet, please?
Article four. I, Michael Flynn, moved that the town vote to transfer from the Vehicle and Major Equipment Fund the sum of $69,939 to purchase a fully equipped new vehicle for the police department to replace an existing police vehicle and anything incidental heretofore. And further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into any necessary agreements to effectuate the purposes of this vote and to dispose of the old police vehicle by sale or trade.
Discussion?
Basically, this is a vehicle. The police need working vehicles to service the community. They have had some difficulty with some of the existing vehicles. We have a vehicle fund to fund this recurring charge for both the police and fire and other vehicles. And this is a move to make sure that we have a working police fleet such that the police can get to calls when necessary.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article four, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article five.
I, Jody Harris, move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $9,966,293 as follows. A, raise taxation by the sum of $2,4031 for debt repayment, principal and interest. B, transfer from the cemetery sale of lots fund the sum of $8,000 to the cemetery budget. C, transfer from the cemetery lot care fund the sum of $5,245 to the cemetery budget. D, from the cemetery perpetual care fund the sum of $4,376 to the cemetery budget. E, transfer from the town technology fund the sum of $11,121 to the town IT budget. F, transfer from the ambulance fund the sum of $65,800 to the ambulance budget. And G, to raise by the taxation the sum of $7,867,720 to be allocated between salaries and expenses of the town according to the remaining budget items as indicated in the Finance Committee report. And to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within a department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines. And further, to increase the proposed Council on Aging COA transportation line item in Department 541 from $2,600 to $4,000 with the $1,400 difference being realized by reducing the director part-time wage line item in the same budget by $1,400.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This year, the budget drivers were, our gas increased by 30%. Our electricity costs increased by 35%. Our health insurance increased by 19.92%. We settled a police union contract. We had the pleasure of hiring new fire chief and new police chief in time to go through the budgets and vet each line item, doing some zero-based budgeting. And we've shored up the public safety budgets this year. And the fleet this year was quite expensive in repairs for the police department, which is why the prior article of purchasing another police vehicle was critical. So we appreciate the town departments working with us and helping to really flesh out their budgets this year so that they, we can understand where we've been short in the past and we'll have other things to focus on for FY '27.
Further discussion? Annie?
Hi. Annie Cameron Pickering-Street. Can you hear me?
I can.
I wanted to express my overall support for this year's operating budget. Over the last several years, the town has chosen to keep growth low. I've been saying for some time that this is not sustainable, so I'm not surprised that this year, we're finally able to tackle some of the shortcomings the town has created. The initial focus is on public safety while also addressing unavoidable increases in healthcare and utilities. I want to pay firepersons a fair wage. They deserve it. I want to make sure that town employees have adequate healthcare. They deserve it, as do our teachers. I also wanted to make a broader point. We should not get too lost in how individual budget articles get defined or named. While they are broken into pieces for us to vote on, in the end, there is basically one pot of money to spend across everything. And that's why every decision we make in one area has a direct impact on another. And that's why long-term strategic planning is important. This year's override is a good example because most of the school increases are in the override. Only 1.9 are included in the non-override budget, which is this article. Usually this number is higher. Last year, the school was 4.8. What does this mean? It means that putting money into the override frees up extra money so that we don't normally have. That's how we can close the fire and ambulance gap and address other issues. It means that if the override fails, we would be faced to having, with having to cut down the town budget to make up the difference. And I don't like saying town budget because the school is part of the town budget. In other words, this town budget would not exist without the override. It doesn't survive without the override. So, given how much attention the override gets, it's worth taking a moment to think about this article, not just how, as we vote on it now, but as we vote on the rest of the budget articles so that we remember how all of the. rest of the budget articles, so that we remember how all of the pieces fit together. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Janet Carlson, 24 Apple Street. Um, I'm very much in favor of wage increases for public safety and other Essex personnel listed here in this report. But I have a question to do with the report's Page 1 language about converting to a full-time fire department as, quote, "not a question of if, but when," unquote. So, in at least two selectmen's meetings, I've heard that this is inevitable and would cost a million dollars. It would be helpful to get some background on this foregone conclusion in order to better understand the report's mention of upcoming tax pressures. My question tonight is, um, threefold. Who came to this conclusion that a full-time department is inevitable? How, based on what factors, constraints, issues? And three, isn't this notion of a full-time department a matter to be voted on by residents at a future town meeting rather than decided for us, as is suggested in the report? Thank you.
I'm going to, it appears that that's going to be out of scope because it's, it's not this year's budget, it's a future budget. So, we're acting on this budget, not some other budget down the road.
Okay, so, but it is relevant to our vote tonight on this article, I would say.
Clark?
Mark Lynch, 16 R County Road. I'd like to ask the chair, who was, uh, just presenting the finance, the budget, uh, article, if town budgets are staying, quote, "within the levy limit," and they're going up, I think, a net of 5.57%, health insurance alone is going up 20%, how is that within the levy limit if we're constrained by Proposition 2 and 1/2? Thank you.
Anyone?
So, one of the things that needs to be considered is that while the town collects certain amount of money in taxes, there are other sources of money that are offsets to taxation. And in this particular budget year, um, the budget plans in 71,000, roughly 71,000 in increases to local receipts. So, those are things like permits, licenses, uh, non-property tax sources. This year, we're using other funds to the tune of about 162,000. You heard in the motion, for example, the ambulance fund is going to fund 68,000, and usually only about 50,000. In addition, there is something known as assessor's overlay. That is an amount of money that the assessors put aside every year in case there are, um, in case people contest the valuation of their property. And if it doesn't get used, it accumulates in a fund. And this year, the assessors have indicated that, uh, about $153,000 can be released from the overlay fund. In addition, the assessors indicated that we can raise $10,000 less in overlay than we did last year. It was 80 last year, 70 is recommended this year. So, the reason we're able to do a 5.6% increase and still stay within the Proposition 2 and 1/2 levy limit is because the other sources, the non-property tax sources of revenue, are offsetting that to an amount that keeps it in that place.
Go ahead. It's okay. Did you want, he's already spoken, so go up here.
Christopher Wolf, Soganese Creek Road. Um, I also am in favor of this, I do have a question on the healthcare increase, which is, uh, what efforts were taken to mitigate the cost increase? And if they, if those efforts were made, how much was saved? Thank you.
Brendan?
Uh, Essex is a very small community, as we all know, and we utilize the services of the Massachusetts Inter-local Insurance Association, which is known as MIA. That's an association where municipalities from across the state band together and, uh, collectively go for, uh, health benefits through Blue Cross Blue Shield. The town benefits tremendously because MIA is able to cap the high end of what an increase would be for a community by using the giant pool of other communities that are participating in the association. And so, over the years, Essex has come to, um, to grips with the fact that MIA is the best place for us. Otherwise, the year-to-year change in health insurance, which can be very flashy, would come and manifest in Essex. And I was told by our representative that it would have been much higher than 19.92 if we weren't capped and a member of MIA. Were there other efforts to look at other providers? No, there were not, because over the years, different boards of selectmen have looked at this question and believe that MIA is the best for this small community.
Mark?
Do I introduce myself again? Uh, again, Mark Lynch, 16 R County Road. I don't mean to get into incredible weeds on, uh, the levy and finances, because it can be very confusing, but in what the town administrator described, those offsets or aids to the Proposition 2 and 1/2 constraint are all benefiting the town budget. Now, when you consider the school as a separate district, they do have some offsets themselves, namely, um, excess and deficiencies, if I have this correctly, which is like, uh, free cash, and they have state aid, Chapter 70. But just take something in local receipts like rent from Conomo Point, 500,000 approximately, again, if I have the number right, but should any of that, in a year like this, help provide levy capacity to the school? I think if you look at the Finance Committee's report and how we're doing this, and how we're saying to the school what they're, how they're driving the override, and I don't mean to, to bring in future articles, but it's, it's germane to this one, we're saying our town departments are within the levy limit, we're using these offsetting factors all for them. If we had a K through 12 region within our town, or even K through 8 and we tuitioned out, which is what we used to do, some of those offsets would aid the school budget in some years, so, just want to make that point. Thank you.
No further discussion? All those in favor of Article 5, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article 6.
Mr. Moderator? Alexa Balbo, 129 Apple Street. I move Article number 7 to be considered before Article number 6.
Is there a second? This was going to be real quick. This is a motion to move Article 7, which is the override, to be in for, in front of Article 6. All those in favor of moving Article 1 by 1, Article 7 by 1, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. We're going to move to Article 7.
I, Kate Koch-Sunquist, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $698,196 for the purpose of supplementing the Manchester Essex Regional School District's fiscal year 2026 assessment, provided that the amount authorized herein shall be contingent upon the vote at the town election to assess additional real estate and personal property taxes in accordance with the provisions of Proposition 2 and 1/2 so-called.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Um, yes, on with the show. Um, I won't start with rankings or accolades, because if we have learned anything from this building that we are inside, it is not, uh, how we look from the outside that matters most in our district or in our town, it is the things that are happening inside. Great things are happening in our district every day. Middle schoolers this year wrote to authors who shaped their lives and received personal responses from authors like Audrey Penn, Dove Pilkey, and my favorite Nathaniel Filbrick, author of In the Heart of the Sea. Third graders honored local heroes with letters for Veterans Day. Community members, Nancy and Gil Frieden started a board game club, pairing EES students with members of the Council on Aging. Across the district, student, staff, and community members are doing outstanding work despite limited resources. During budget season, we must balance student needs, community expectations, and financial constraints. This year's approved budget is $32.6 million, a 7.83% increase over fiscal year '25. Personnel, health insurance, and special education, over 90% of our budget, are the main drivers. Healthcare costs alone are up 22.9%, partly due to market forces and partly due to high usage, which resulted in a 125% loss ratio, so high that other providers declined to bid. If we were a single-town district, the budget process would be much simpler. We would need to meet the expectations of only one town. Our greatest challenge as a regional district and as a regional committee is that we receive guidance from two towns, and the guidance from our member towns does not always align. Over the last five years, Essex leaders have asked us to keep costs as low as possible. As a result, we've cut the late bus, we've shared staff between schools, we've restructured departments, we've removed elementary world language, and we've increased student fees to keep our annual assessment growth between 3 and 3.5%. We've eliminated over 15 general education teaching positions due to declining enrollment, but at the same time, we've had to respond to increasing student needs by adding interventionists and special educators. These interventionists have been critical in helping our students at Essex Elementary to improve their MCAS scores, resulting in the State Education Department naming EES a school of recognition. Manchester leaders have asked us to maintain level services, ensuring the same academic rigor, variety, and support even as staffing shifts. Our greatest challenge is proposing one budget to satisfy two towns with distinct financial realities and educational goals. We're working to preserve both the quality of education our communities expect and the partnership between our towns. One budget, two towns. At a recent forum, Board of Selectmen Chairwoman Ruth Corrine wisely said, "When you start talking about regionalizing, you have to be conscientious that we're merging. We're creating a partnership, and with that partnership comes those expenses." I ask that you take that to heart tonight. We ask that the Town of Essex approve the expenses of our shared partnership in the Manchester Essex Regional School District.
Robbie Billsbury, whoa, Robbie Billsbury, 126 Eastern Avenue. Good evening, thank you for giving me a chance to speak this evening. Uh, I've been a teacher in this district since 1998. I had a larger, uh, six-page thing, I'm going to, I'm going to shorten it quite a bit. A lot of great things have been said this evening already. You know, I feel here charged with representing 22 of my colleagues who are on the chopping block, and they're wondering if they're going to be able to continue doing what they love to do this fall. Uh, because I love both our community and our schools, you can probably imagine I've dug in pretty deeply to the finances. Um, I've gone to many school committee meetings, many board meetings, I've talked to lots of people who know a lot about the town budget and a lot about the school budget, and I've learned a, a couple of things. Obviously, it is normal for a school every four or five years when you have Proposition 2 and 1/2 limiting you and normal school growth with really, really smart fiscal responsible schools grow at about 3 or 3.5%. When you just project that out, uh, every once in a while, we've seen it in our communities, every four or five years, you need to do a budget override. Those are normal things. Uh, the, the override passes, and then that passing sets the baseline town budget a little higher for a few years. Overrides do not mean that towns or schools are mismanaging anything or even adding anything. These overrides are needed to just be able to fund the existing financial needs of a town as costs arise. Uh, another big thing is, we have not passed an override for our schools or in our town for tw- about 20 years. That's a huge amount of time where things have gone askew in terms of, uh, being where we need to be financially. I'm really happy with our current budget, how we passed this budget, which gives the town what we need. One of the things in our, you know, our override, obviously, we have all these amazing things in our town that we are doing, new police cars, there are weapons that are more modernized, there are lots of things that you'll see later on in the, uh, in the evening, uh, about what our town needs. This is not just a school ri- override, it is a town override. Firefighters, volunteer firefighters that are going to save you, uh, they make $20 an hour, we need to up that to 38. That override that we're going to pass, it all includes the school and all these other things for our town. This is a town override, um, and the entire town benefits from it. You know, in terms of everything else, um, you know, I kind of want to cut down what I want to say, but, um, you know, the bottom line for us, uh, we have an amazing school system. The cuts that, uh, are proposed if this doesn't pass are absolutely devastating, uh, for the kids in our community. We must pass this override. Thank you.
So, go ahead.
Dan Chande, 7 Prospect Street. I would, uh, like to move the previous question.
Two people waiting.
Ah, yeah, I know, now.
You almost had it, but-
Almost had it.
Go ahead, Don. Go ahead, Don.
Don Burnham, 22 County Road. I taught school in this building for 20 years. I am very, very interested in our children's education. I am really not in favor of this override, and I have several reasons why. I don't know if the majority of the people in this room know that our children at Essex Elementary score much lower on the MCAS than the people at Memorial Elementary. Two, it, the third and fourth graders, two years ago, in some cases, were scoring 40 points below the education that they were getting in Manchester. There is a problem. The fifth graders are still not, the third and fourth grade has come up, because the region has hired a coach to coach the teachers on how they should be teaching the curriculum. I find that a problem. If they were the teachers that were given the curriculum, it should have worked. I also want you to think about the fact that our fifth graders are not on the same level when they get to sixth grader Manchester. And I'm not making this up, all the MCAS scores are online, you can look them up. I just think that you need to think about the fact that our children need to get a better education in Essex. If we are a, a regional school system, we should be getting the same education. And before you give them carte blanche again, I'd like you to think about that.
I'm just going to keep going. Go ahead. I think you were up before John.
Okay. It's fine with me if she responds to that.
Excuse me?
It's fine with me if the school committee member responds to that, if she'd like to.
If, you, you want to respond to that?
I'll respond to that. We're not going to try to brush things under the rug, Dawn is absolutely correct. We have been working very, very hard at Essex Elementary to raise our MCAS scores. You'll recall that this year, we were named a school of recognition as a result of the improvements made by hiring interventionists and instructional coaches. The art of teaching has changed significantly, just in the last five years, but even more so in the last 20 years. Yes, our teachers are constantly working to perfect their craft, because they are professionals, and that's what we require professionals to do. We are very proud of the progress that is being made, and we are not trying to hide the fact that there is more progress to go.
Betsy McKean, Lufkin Point Road. So, I just have a quick few things, because I know there's a lot of kids in the gym who are beeping babysat and need to get home. But, uh, as an Essex resident and the mom of a fifth grader and a community pediatrician who cares also lots about the well-being of the kids in our town, and the town itself, of course, funding our public schools isn't about luxury or excess, and it's not about choosing students over seniors. I really find that narrative to be misleading and unhelpful. It's around, I think we've heard it. But this is about ensuring that all kids have access, all kids, Essex kids, have access to a solid and equitable education. They deserve reasonable class sizes, full school weeks- They deserve reasonable class sizes, full school weeks, including Wednesdays, and the stability that they deserve. It's also about fulfilling legal and moral obligations, especially around special education programs and health insurance plans, which Robbie has mentioned and others have mentioned. They've been, we've been seeing that cost rise everywhere. It's about our town departments, which after years of, I hate to use the word bare minimum, but it, through fiscal responsibility, it's been bare minimum funding, we're at a breaking point now. I see families every day, and I know how vital, strong schools and strong multi-generational families are to kids' health and their future. And I think what's really cool about the fact that since I've gotten involved with school advocacy the last few years, I've really gotten to know people of all ages in this town and how that's affected people of all ages and how much everyone cares deeply about Essex. And that's what gives me hope for us as a town. We can have both excellent schools and supported seniors. We can build a future with affordable housing, thoughtful tax relief for those on fixed incomes, and a stronger local economy. But we have to act. As Robbie mentioned, the last override was in 2005, nearly 20 years ago. We've stretched our resources as far as we can. This override is absolutely necessary, and not just for the schools, but for the town as a whole. I know I get nervous about change, and a lot of us do, but change is inevitable. The question is whether we're gonna guide it with purpose or just let it happen to us. I've only lived here for 10 years, but what I know about Essex is that it's a place of community, connection, collaboration, and that's what we need to lean on now.
Hello, my name is Henry Stevens. I'm a senior at Manchester Essex. I'm a student and a voter, and I'm here to voice my support for the passing of this budget as well as the override next week. To start off, I think that there's a few key reasons why this contingency budget that we currently see cannot be the option that we go with. Some things such as two kindergarten teachers' assistants being cut at the same time that we're talking about combining kindergarten classes to have larger class sizes, so that would be larger kindergarten classes without the help for our teachers that we need here. As well as that, the proposition of multi-grade classrooms, we know that without that focus on each kid at where they're at developmentally, grade by grade, students will fall behind in the lower grades, and I believe that proposal was kindergarten, first and second grade would be combined. So that's something that concerned me. Another thing would be an entire bus route being cut. I think that would cut into both students and families' schedules that are already so busy, and anybody with a student athlete, a boost in athletic fees, we know that they're expensive enough as is. I'd like to share my personal experience, though, in how I feel that our community's investment and care in Manchester Essex public schools has supported my education, personal development, and future. Throughout my years in the school, I was always super interested in my social studies classes, though those were always history, and I wasn't quite sure what I wanted to do with that interest in the future. So last year, when I took APUS Gov., it was like a spark went off, like it connected all of my academic interests into one course. That spark grew into a bright fire of curiosity which Ms. Coleman nurtured. I was able to discover my interest in government and law due to the opportunity to take this elective from the wide range of classes offered to me as a student. This had immediate effects, not just in the fact that I had found a class that I was incredibly passionate about. Because of this, I was able to trim down my college search to schools with strong programs in government and public policy. And next year, I will be attending American University in Washington, DC, and will be double majoring in political science and legal studies. Oh, thank you. The point of this isn't to brag, but to just show that being able to explore various topics through electives allowed me to discover my academic interest earlier, giving me a leg up in the college search process. Since then, I've engaged this interest in many different spheres. I've applied to, I applied to and was selected for Seth Moulton's Youth Congress. I'm currently carrying out a meaningful internship through our school's senior internship program at Gloucester City Hall with the Clerk's Office, where I've been able to get hands-on experience in managing government elections and the legislative process, such as tonight as well. Where was I, where was I? Which, you know, I feel like won't look too bad on my resume when applying for internships in DC next year. It's clear to me that passing this budget and the override is not just an investment in our schools, but in students' futures. All of this is to say that one class, one teacher made the difference in being able to, in me being able to hone in on my academic interest, which I didn't even know I had before taking that class. This then translated to discovering opportunities that genuinely interest me and give me a leg up in my future, with my years of in high school already being a time to gain experience. When I see these three and a half high school positions cut in the arts, English, social studies, and world language programs in the contingency budget, I see two things. The first of which is three kind, caring teachers who know the, who know your name despite you never having taken one of their classes, losing their jobs. A halftime position, by the way, with halftime benefits on a rotating block schedule is not set to stay. The second thing that I see is less quantitative. I'm gonna use the fire metaphor again, but I see an innumerable amount of wicks that will remain unlit for years to come. Teachers being cut means there are less sections of classes and less opportunities for that same spark of curiosity that I felt to be cast in others. Teachers being cut means there will be less people to nurture that spark into a growing flame, and trust me, these four teachers know how to tend to a fire. Why should students interested in social studies, English, world languages, and arts be any less able to explore their curiosity than I was two years ago? Why should they have to miss their own AP Gov. experience? A wide range of classes, which are only available when we have enough teachers to run them, is necessary in making our school strong, allowing exploration and curiosity, allowing students to develop and hone in on their interests during their high school years.
Excuse me, Henry?
Yes.
Your time is up.
Of course, sir, thank you.
Sorry.
I don't wanna have to break this all up, but I'm going to. But many of you long-term Essex residents will remember my mom and dad. My dad spent some 20 years on the Essex School Committee as well as on the Vocational School Committee, back when Essex tuitioned its students to Gloucester, then Hamilton and Wyndham. My dad was a keen advocate of education and how important it is, and I agree. Essex Elementary was like going to a private school with our kids learning and being at least a year ahead of other towns around us by the time of their eighth grade graduation. But dad was also first and foremost a taxpayer, with six kids to feed and his local pharmacy to run for almost 45 years. You can thank my dad and others like Jeff's dad for the last major renovation of this building, which included the addition of this gym and the library. However, I'm here today to push back on this budget, not because I don't value education, but because I do. Since regionalization of the Manchester and Essex schools, I believe Essex has been on the short end of the stick. So far, Essex is paying for two schools on Manchester land, yet with only a handful of Essex students in their new Memorial School. At prior town meetings, I argued against Essex paying for a building that the school district rents but belongs to the town of Manchester. I argued there were no guarantees that when Essex's building needed to be updated, that Manchester would pay up. Had Manchester turned over the real estate to the district, and the district owned the land, I might have felt otherwise. But when you start out in a marriage where all the decision-making is one-sided, there is bound to be resentment, and it often ends in failure. Under the regionalization agreement, the vote will always go Manchester's majority desires in the end. The only concrete power that Essex has is the budget approval tonight. I've heard, if Essex doesn't agree to an override, that some in Manchester have already threatened that they won't pay up for the renovations of a new school here in Essex. Because we do not ultimately have an equal vote, we have to ask nicely, since we have no sticks left in our carrot-stick quiver. For years, I have heard the town meetings, at town meetings, how great the Manchester Essex School District was, being ranked in the top five by Boston Magazine. What they didn't tell you is that one of the metrics was how much the district paid per student, and average class sizes were big factors in elevating the ranking. Just because you throw money at a problem doesn't make you better at it. The 2024 ratings put Manchester Essex ranked number three in the state with average class sizes 11.7 students per class. Marshfield High School had 16.7 average class size, scored higher in both math and English than Manchester and Essex does. Marshfield was 67th ranked. I had 25 in my classes, probably throughout my education, 25-plus students. My dad always had the taxpayer in mind because he was one of them. I think the school committee and the highly-paid superintendent with offices in Manchester, not here in Essex, have lost sight and have taken the town's credit card without our permission and committed us to long-term contracts that they knew at the same staffing levels that they didn't have the funds to pay off at the end of the proverbial month. So please, don't come here now and say you don't have a choice but to cut staff. That was always your choice when you signed the contract. The credit card mentality has to stop. Hard choices should have been made over the past several years, which, remember, this is not to construct a new building or other long-term capital project, but just to operate and pay our salaries. When you want new rugs and window shades and piano lessons, but you don't have the money, you wash the carpet and you make do with what you have. Us individuals would lose our homes if we spent beyond our means like this. I've heard that by some estimates, there are some 400 less students in the district, but a smaller decrease in teachers. I've heard that the Town of Essex has asked for a list of classes of the class sizes, but the school committee instead reached out to their lawyer, who said they don't have to answer. The town wasn't looking for names, just the raw numbers. When the town asked the North Shore Vocational School, they got the information the next day. That is a basic question that we credit card holders all have the right to know. Somehow, Boston Magazine was privy to the numbers last year, but not our own town fathers. Public education is about the three hours, reading, writing, arithmetic. Beyond that, everything else is nice to have, but not the public's obligation and not beyond the age of 16 years.
John.
I got, I got one paragraph.
What? 32. You've got time?
The elderly, the elderly of Essex on, you said I was out of time, or 30 seconds?
No, five.
Okay. Please vote no on this.
John.
37.
John. Go ahead. What's the point? What? I'm gonna let Dawn speak first. She's been standing.
The question was, are you calling? Did she got a background? Why are you responding?
It's, because there's people standing.
She's been asking.
Dawn, go ahead.
Could I have the superintendent reply?
I'm gonna go to, I'm gonna go to Dawn first.
As Kate pointed out, things have changed a lot with teachers and education in the 20 years since I taught, and I will not deny that. There was a teacher that taught here for many years and was very loved, named Jean Fulton. She had breast cancer, which metastasized to her brain. Within her will, she wrote that a scholarship was to be set up after her passing and when her house sold, to help teachers to increase their knowledge, to go on to get more certificates. I know for a fact that that money was sent to the school district. I have copies of the check and the letter that was sent to the school district from her lawyer. I have a copy of a letter from the superintendent thanking the lawyer.
Dawn, what's, what's, get to a point.
It is, let me finish, please. It does.
Gotta get to a point quick.
The point is, the scholarship has never been established, and the school got the money, and I am supposed to be initiating the scholarship. That's why I know nothing ever happened with it. And I'm concerned that if they got that scholarship money and didn't set up the scholarship, what other things are we not knowing about?
She was standing over here.
Elle Wolf, Forest Ave. There are so many things in the cut package that I could talk about. There's so many things that would be bad for our kids. It was hard to figure out which one to focus on. You know, sharing a gym teacher between two schools where the kids barely get outside at all and will only now get outside for gym, you know, once a week. The fact that the increase to my taxes, if you've gone and done the, use the calculator to see the impact on your taxes, would cost me less than the cost of getting childcare every Wednesday when I need to have a babysitter because my kids are getting out of school early. It's bad enough when it happens once a month, now I have to deal with that every week with two working parents. But the thing I wanted to focus on is the thing that's most personal to me. According to a U.S. Department of Education report released on February 12, the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has failed to comply with a federal law to provide necessary support for students with disabilities. I bring this up because it's really, really hard to get your kid the help and services that they need when you have a fully functioning, fully-staffed school. My daughter went to Essex Elementary, she's in sixth grade now, her first year in the middle school. She's on a 504, and it was really hard to get that 504 set up. We had to jump through all kinds of hoops and talk to all kinds of people to just get her the essential services she needed to be able to learn. I was really worried when she went to the middle school this year because I didn't understand how there would be continuity entering a new school. And I can tell you that the middle school principal was 100% responsible for making sure that my kid got the necessary services she needed. Before, I even had to worry about it, they had reached out, they had set up a 504 meeting. Every single one of my kids' teachers was on that meeting in the first month of school, giving me their observations about what they'd seen in the classroom and setting up a new 504. The idea that the middle school kids will not have a principal of their own, that that's just a service we can cut, seems absurd to me, to have both high school and middle schools under one principal. You are definitely gonna sacrifice the quality of the education and the services the kids receive. We're already, obviously, in Massachusetts, having a problem meeting the needs of kids with additional educational needs. So how do you then just remove the oversight for an entire school? You know, these are, these kids are in one building, but those are two schools, they are two separate schools, and they each deserve their own ambassador and their own leader who will advocate for them and help them. I've been unbelievably impressed with the quality of the education my kids have gotten in this district, but particularly, as we've gone down this path with a kid who has some special needs, the advocates for them are critically important. So for me, you know, the increase to my taxes, I've done the math, it's not worth gutting our schools over. The last thing I'd like to say is, this vote will likely be reconsidered immediately after the vote, so please don't leave, please stick around, because that will happen. Should we pass this override, please don't forget to show up next Monday and vote.
Last speaker? Last one.
Meredith Paulus, 85, John Weis. I just have a question about how things will roll out between now and next week. If this passes tonight, but then the town votes down the override next week, what will we see happen after that?
I think Greg's gonna go down that, he can speak generally what happens if one passes and the other one doesn't, or vice versa, and there's a timing of the school getting back with a budget.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. So because the town is part of a regional school district, if you approve this article and Article 8 tonight, but the override question does not pass at the ballot next week, that is essentially a rejection of the school committee's budget. So what that means is that the budget goes back to the school committee, they have a period of time to reconsider and recertify their budget to the towns. Each of the towns then both have to have another town meeting to vote to approve the budget, and in Essex, that would likely also mean another dead-exclusion question on a ballot. And if it does not pass at the second round, then there is what we informally call supertown meeting, which is convened by the school committee, and it is a meeting of, a combined meeting of the A combined meeting of the voters in Manchester and Essex to vote on whatever the budget is at that time, and a majority of those present and voting at that meeting will decide what the budget is. If for some reason the budget still doesn't pass after that, then it goes to the Department of Education, and they establish a budget that is based on some formula. They call it a 1/12 budget, which I think is very... A minimal budget to meet your minimum contributions.
And just a quick follow-up question, if I might. Where does the contingency budget fit into the whole picture? That's the part I have been having trouble understanding, why that exists and where it would come into play.
So if the school committee needed to present a budget that was within 2.5%, that represents the amount of money that would need to be cut from the budget that we have proposed, and the contingency plan is the cuts that the superintendent would recommend within the 2.5%?
Perfect.
No, sorry. Level funding, with no growth, zero?
1/12.
Yep.
Okay. Kate, do you have a point of order? Did you have something you want to state? We're all done. You good?
Oh, no. Is now my turn?
I was saying that was the last speaker, right there.
Yes, okay. So I just wanted to clarify some things that were said about the rankings. The amount spent per student is not included in the Boston Magazine rankings. The statistics that are included are average class size, student-to-teacher ratio, percent of 10th graders scoring proficient or higher on MCAS in each subject area, average SAT scores, math, percent of advanced placement tests at proficient or above, graduation rate, percent attending college, percent educator evaluations proficient or above, and that's it. But the amount spent is not part of the rankings.
Okay. We're gonna move on to Article 7. All those in favor of Article 7, raise your card. All those opposed, the article passes.
Point of order.
Oh, sorry, we're gonna go back to 6.
Before that, I would like to move to reconsider, please.
Okay. Move to reconsider means we can reconsider our article that we just voted on. So a yes vote requires us to revisit the article, a no vote requires us to no longer revisit that article. Any others discussion on... Although there's no discussing, no debate on that. Article 7, we just voted on, that passed. A vote to reconsider is to bring the article back up. If you say yes, we will continue to talk about it. If you vote no, we will no longer talk about it, and it can't be brought up again in this meeting, even if we go to the next night. So, all those in favor of reconsidering, raise your card. All those opposed? We are not gonna reconsider it. Excuse... One second. Can I just get Bruce Tarr to speak for a quick second or two, right, Bruce? So this is Senator Bruce Tarr, he's gonna say a few words on the state of the state.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members of town meeting, and I apologize. I can imagine what it's like to be about to be at the microphone and told that Bruce Tarr is gonna speak, so I apologize in advance. First of all, I want to thank everyone for coming out. It's good to see such robust engagement in the civic life of this community, and we're seeing that here tonight, and it's something to be very proud of. Second, I wanted you all to know that we are in the process of developing the state budget for the coming fiscal year that begins on July 1 of this year, so just a couple of months away. And we're dealing with an incredibly complicated budget situation because our revenues are starting to level off. And so that budget is not going to be able to be increased by the amounts that we've seen over the last few years, and that's before we get into the uncertainty of what's happening at the federal level. But nonetheless, we're pushing forward, trying to develop a reasonable budget. The House has already done so, and the Senate will debate in a couple of weeks that budget. In the meantime, we are doing a supplemental budget, and in that supplemental budget, we are working to fund important priorities using the excess money that's coming from the millionaire's tax, which is overperforming projections for what it would yield. And we are trying to use that money, number one, to make sure that we fully fund our commitment to special education funding, which has fallen short. Number two, we are working to more fully fund regional school transportation, which should be at 100%, but has not been in a long time. And number three, we are working in both budgets, the supplemental and the General Appropriations Act, the main budget for the state, to increase minimum-per-pupil funding for school districts across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'm not gonna editorialize much about anything at this microphone, but I am gonna editorialize about that subject. For far too long, far too many school districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have been receiving only minimum-per-pupil aid, and that needs to change. And while we work on that, I've offered several amendments that'll be considered in the General Appropriations Act. While we work on changing the formula, which is a process that can take multiple years, but needs to happen, we're gonna do our very best to increase that minimum-per-pupil aid number. So you may remember that in the current fiscal year, it's at $104 per pupil. The governor, when she filed her budget to get us started, started at $75 per pupil. The House of Representatives increased that number by a significant amount to go to $150 per pupil, minimum aid. In the Senate, we hope to at least hold that number and maybe increase it. So we are in the middle of making those decisions and trying to be as supportive as we can of the cost of education and the cost of local aid, also known as unrestricted general government aid. As we move into this year, this coming year, and as we look at limited resources, we will stay committed to make sure we fund our basic priorities, things that we have a commitment to that's already in statute: minimum-per-pupil aid, regional school transportation, special education. And we will look to begin to lay the foundation to change a formula that needs to be changed because right now, out of approximately 318 school districts in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, about 230 receive minimum-per-pupil aid. We need to change that. Lastly, I wouldn't... I would not be at this microphone and do my due diligence if I did not thank the folks at the front of the room, whether it be the Finance Committee, whether it be the Select Board, or whether it be the Town Administrator, one of the all-stars of town administration in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Brendan Zabricki. And I want you to know, I want you to know that we have an outstanding relationship, I do, Representative Ferrante does, with Brendan, with the Select Board, and we will continue to work in partnership. Brendan has already sent us a long list of requests for funding on behalf of the town in the budget. Representative Ferrante has already been able to secure some of the funding for those things, and we will be working on the rest. Lastly, I just want to say it's an honor to represent you in the state senate, and it is particularly inspiring to come out tonight. I've been to two other town meetings so far, and it's great to come and see so many people who care so much about the life of this town. It's an honor to represent you in the senate. Thank you very much.
We need a...
Michael Roy, 46, Main Street. I move that we reopen Article 26.
Revisit?
Revisit Article 26.
There's a motion to reconsider Articles 26. Is there a second? Again, what this does, if a positive vote brings us back and opens up Article 26, a no vote says it's solved and we don't have to reconsider it anymore. So, all those in favor of reconsidering Article 26, raise your card. All those opposed, the motion passes. Article 6. No, it failed. Article 6.
I, Robert Teal, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $348,000 to pay for the town's share of the operating and capital costs of the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2025.
Is there a second? Any discussion? No discussion? No? You're not here for 6?
I'm not here for a second.
You're here for 6? Okay.
This is a bargain, we should vote for it.
What did he say? Any further discussion on 6? No? All those in favor of Article 6, raise your card. Any opposed? The motion passes. We are now Article 8. 8.
Can I move that debate for... Could I move to limit the debate for this motion to three minutes?
Just three minutes? Is there a second? Yes, you can. We can. If this passes, we will only debate for three minutes on this article. All those in favor of limiting debate, raise your card. All those opposed? We will limit the debate to three minutes. Article 8.
Better get to the microphones. I, Kate Koch-Sonquist, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,996,614 and to transfer from the school apportionment fund the sum of $50,432 for a total appropriation of $10,047,46 to fund a portion of the town's assessment from the Manchester Essex Regional School District, said sum to be calculated solely in accordance with the agreement between the towns of Essex and Manchester by the Sea, Massachusetts, with respect to the formation of a regional school district, as most recently amended by invoking and improving the provision found in Paragraph 4 of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 71, Section 16B, allowing district members to reallocate the sum of their required local contributions to the district in accordance with the regional agreement for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025.
Is there a second? Any discussion in that three minutes? Nope. No one there? All those in favor of Article 8, raise your card. All those opposed, the motion passes. Come on, Alva. Let's go. Come on!
I'm old. Give me a break.
Can't hear you.
I, Alvin Guajaro, move that the town vote to approve the wage and salary scale for fiscal year 2026 in accordance with the recommendation of the Personnel Board report, which was first recommended by the Personnel Board on March 24, 2025, and updated as of... for the Harbor Master Department on April 14, 2025, and placed on file with the town clerk, town website on April 15, 2025.
Is there a second? All those in favor of Article 9, raise your card. All those opposed, the motion passes.
A motion to move Articles 42 and 43 to be discussed and voted on now?
Yes, you can. Is there a second? All those... Just gonna move Articles 42 and 43 to before 10, so all those in favor of moving to move Articles 42 and 43, raise your card. All those opposed, the motion passes. We will move to Article 42.
I, Brian Gressler, moves to see if the town will vote to amend Section 2-4.2 of the town's general bylaws with additions and bold and deletions and streg through, with said amendments being for the purpose of aligning the town's bylaws with the recommendations of the 2015 Town of Essex Financial Management Review as provided by the Massachusetts Department of Revenue, Division of Local Services.
Is there a second? Discussion?
So in 2015, DLS released this review of Essex, and it included a number of recommendations, some of which were taken up at the time and some of which were never implemented. So we're just proposing to institute one of those recommendations through this bylaw update, and that is the way to change... To change the way that the Finance Committee appoints members. Currently, the committee picks members itself, and then their picks are approved by the Board of Selectmen. What the DLS said in their report, and I'll just read it, their recommendation, their exact words, it said, "The self-appointed aspect of the Finance Committee bylaw is uncommon, and with good reason, since it could skew towards a homogenous membership, or at least fuel perception that the committee does not represent residents' diverse points of view. As an alternative, we suggest assigning committee appointing authority to the town moderator, as many towns do." So it's been 10 years. We didn't make this change. We wanted to make sure that some of this was still accurate, so I went out and looked at 270 town charters and bylaws, and, you know, the statement is still accurate. This is still uncommon. Nobody does it like Essex, not a single town in the state. 56% of the towns do it by town moderator, and the next closest one is 14% by election. I won't get into each other one, but you got the idea here that this is the way that most folks do it, and there's a reason for it. So why the moderator? They're elected, they're not appointed, they're a little closer to the voters, there's... They are in... They don't have a policy position, they're not... So they're... You know, they've got that independence, and that's about it. So, thank you.
Any further discussion?
So in the report, the Financial Management Review of September 2015, which can be found on the town's website, it... The exact language is, "The self-appointed aspect of the Finance Committee bylaw is uncommon." Our Finance Committee is not self-appointed. So our Finance Committee interviews, they take letters of interest and resumes, they sit down, they interview prospective members of the Finance Committee, and they figure out who has municipal experience or finance experience and what they bring to the table. They then make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, it's a system of checks and balances. Then that recommendation comes to the Board of Selectmen, who is the appointing authority. So it's just not factually true. I would argue that this report got it wrong.
Further discussion? I think, Rob, you were up.
Hey, everyone. Rob Fitzgibbon, 18, Main Street. I'm against this as a former Finance Committee person. I find this article arbitrary and authoritarian. I don't understand how a single decision-maker is better than the current system that we have. I love our moderator, he's awesome, he knows finance and stuff, but he's just one person that works twice a year.
All right, man?
I think that running the gauntlet of three select people, or three people on the Select Board, is a much more democratic process, and Essex is unique. We should keep it as it is, so I say vote no.
Yeah, I was gonna have... Go ahead.
So, real quick, we did not... We kept the Board of Selectmen approval process. We just changed it from the recommendation coming from the committee to the moderator. The moderator also appoints the DWP Commissioner, the Essex Tech Rep, so it's something that they do do. So we have kept that check and balance, it's still in there, that language is unchanged. It is just changing from the current committee, who makes the recommendation, to the moderator, who makes the recommendation. Thank you.
I just have a question.
Okay.
Kate Koch-Sonquist, Dodge Street. Ruth, you said that they're not self-appointed. Have the Finance Committee members ever recommended a new Finance Committee member who has not been approved by the Board of Selectmen?
Not in my six years on the boards, not that I'm aware of.
Ed Neal, 15, Western Ave. Some people move to Essex because we do things differently than in other towns. Some people move to Essex because we do things differently than in other towns, not just try to copy the other 350 communities. And I've had, never had any issues with the Finance Committee. There have been numerous individuals appointed from different, you know, segments of the community, they've done a good job, and I just don't see the need for this change.
Oh, Mark, yes. Mark?
Does he see me? Mark Lynch, 16 R County Road. I started in this process along with the moderator in 1995. God, we're old. Some may remember, well, it's my daughter's eighth-grade history teacher said, "You should only, you should only refer to history if it brings something to the current discussion." Hopefully, that's what I'll do. Over the years, in the early days, we couldn't even field the Finance Committee, so, to see so many people wanting to be on it, I think that's great. I'm a little bit, well, I wouldn't go as far as to postpone this article because, indefinitely postpone, because I really applaud the petitioners for bringing it and trying to, to bring about change. And normally, I would kind of work my backroom channels as a former selectman and try and move this, but I'm just going to throw it out here tonight, and what I think is, shortly after the elections are done and the Select Board is seated, it's time to form a, we'll call it a Town Government Review Committee. What I think the, the highest priority is, is that we look to have a five-person Select Board. We've gotten complex now, huge budgets, we're part of this region that has a $32 million budget, we have a budget almost the same. Topsfield did it, Manchester did it. I really think it's something needed, it spreads some of the work and the responsibilities out a month that are, that are so focused on three people right now, and it brings in a wider cross-section on the day-to-day, so we're not sitting here trying to get through 44 articles. So, I mean, those of us who've been at this a while will tell you, town meeting is the purest form of democracy, you have to come. And while I still believe that's true, I think we've kind of gotten to a point where we need to really rethink things, so I will encourage the sitting Select Board to form some sort of committee to review this and move to things like a five-person Select Board, or perhaps what's the appointment process for the FinCom to be looked at and things like that. Thank you.
Mike Gerhart, Lowland Farm Road. I think the, you know, I really appreciate what the Finance Committee does and the people who volunteer positions for the town, I think it's really a unique aspect of this town, but I think the flawed process of, of really a self-selecting group is problematic, in that despite your best intentions, you end up with a homogeneous group who tends to see the way that the majority does, and that's just problematic in its foundational setup of how it, how it gets done. So, I think as, at least as an interim step to find an alternative way to find members who may bring a, a different voice or a different point of view to a committee, I think is a, is a good step, and then maybe the next is a, is a committee or, or something that would, would bring a different approach to it, but I think in the meantime, this would be a good step.
No further discussion?
Elwell Forrest Ave. I just want to echo what that gentleman said. I think a lot of folks in town, you know, there's sort of two camps. Do you want progress? Do you want forward momentum, or do you want things to stay exactly as they are forever right now? And it's hard, because this is a great little town and we want it to stay great, but the reality of economics and, you know, people's incomes and inflation are such that we need to find new ways to do things. And I completely agree, we need a more equitable way to appoint these folks so that we have new opinions and new ideas. So, whether it's this recommendation or something else, I really do believe we need to look at how that, that town board in particular operates to bring more equity and more voices from the town, because I, I know a lot of the decisions that have been made in recent years have not reflected our own values, and I'm sure that's true for lots of other people.
Rob?
Last thing, as a, as a former Finance Committee member, I want to stress that I went to art school. So, the process that I went through, I don't even remember who recommended me, I'd served on the planning board before, the cultural council. The process, yes, some of the Finance Committee people knew me, the selectmen knew me, and there was a process, but ultimately, it was the selectmen that decided, the, it was not, you know, the Finance Committee in some sort of cabal. And the thing is, we talk about, well, we don't want self-selecting, well, we're giving it to one person with this article, it is self-selected by one individual, that just doesn't make sense to me.
Jody?
Mr. Moderator? Jody Davis, 58 Story Street. I am the third former selectman to speak on this article. Some would say I'm an old selectman. I'm also, in full disclosure, the deputy town moderator, so when Mr. Moderator is sailing through the Caribbean, I'm the one who gets to take the slings and arrows of the body politic. This is a unique environment. Any article that encourages people to volunteer for town service, I support wholeheartedly and with every ounce of energy I can muster in my body. There is an ample crowd here tonight, many of whom are now becoming more sophisticated in the finances of how a community is dealt with. Please volunteer, express your interest, call the FinCom, call the selectmen, call your neighbor who might know somebody in the FinCom, reach out if you are really interested. That having been said, the Finance Committee is probably the most unique committee we have in town, it does require a certain level of knowledge and understanding of how public finance works and how tax rates impact individuals' lives and how the community has sustained itself over a period of time. History does matter, right? How we've done things, why we're unique, is one of the reasons that many of us, if not most of us, live here. On that basis, I don't ever remember realistically there being a problem with the way that we appointed people, other than finding people to appoint. So, I would advocate that we not change what is not broken and instead fix the things that are. Thank you.
Stuart Pratt, Western Avenue. I was on the Finance Committee for almost eight years, I think, and chairman for six, and I will tell you, the process we used introduced me to a lot of people I didn't know, and it took people on the committee who were familiar with how we did things to ask the right questions of the people that were, we were interviewing for the position. And I think it's a shame to even consider changing this.
One last.
I'm so nervous. So, Stacy Capitasto, Apple Street. Quick question for the Finance Committee or whoever wants to answer this. We have, is currently six members on the Finance Committee? Okay, and how many spots generally? Like, it's so, we're full. Have you ever turned anyone away from, like, have you ever had anyone come and say no and not send them up to the Board of Selectmen? That's my question.
Jody Harris, Spring Street. Yes, we recently, the last two seats actually had two people apply for the seat, and they were interviewed thoroughly both times and voted to pass on a name to the Board of Selectmen.
Can we, we move? If you're going to speak, you need to be up at the mic, I can't.
Could you just tell, well, it was a question in response to what she said, so I didn't know until she was done saying it. Could you just clarify, when you appoint somebody, how long do they stay on the Finance Committee? And then, so, the last two placements, how long did the, how long did those people stay on the Finance Committee? And if seats are vacated, how do you notify the public that you are looking for more people to fill them, and how quickly do you fill them?
It varies depending on what seat they're filling, if somebody is coming off the committee after a three, it's a three-year term in general, so if you're filling a seat for somebody else, it may be one year, could be a year and a half. And then, generally, we seek to find volunteers, there's not an official process on how we advertise positions, to my knowledge. I was appointed, or I wasn't appointed, I didn't know anybody on the Finance Committee, I wasn't looking to go on the Finance Committee, I was at a Finance Committee meeting and they had questions about something, and I offered some, some facts for them, and I was asked to join the Finance Committee because they had an empty seat, and they put my name forward to the Board of Selectmen. So, it's, it's been tough to find Finance Committee members, and we look for people with a broad perspective, and it's, it's, it's a lot more work than you think, so, it's not just a rubber stamp, we go to a meeting for an hour or two, and, so, we seek out the best candidates possible.
Last one?
Mark Whitman, Lufkin Street. We've heard from a lot of former selectmen, a lot of former Finance Committee members, and it sounds like historically, this has been a great process and it's worked really well. Would you say that in recent years, this has been perhaps a less-than-successful process? It sounds like perhaps there's been less vetting of candidates, less of an effort to notify the public when there has been seats that are open and perhaps not as much transparency and clarity as when these opportunities come up? I happen to know of at least of one highly qualified individual that was being considered and was passed over for no good reason, so, even though this may have been a wonderful process in the past, I think it's clear that things are not quite as transparent as they used to be, and things are becoming much more homogeneous than they used to be. So, there's a lot of people here now, I would say, things were wonderful before, they're not so wonderful now, your dad may have designed this building, and I'm sure it was beautiful before, the walls are crumbling now, things aren't always what they used to be, so, I would consider passing, voting yes on this motion, because things are not always what they appear to be, and I think there's a lot of wonderful people here, if they know about an opportunity, would be happy to serve and do that if they know the opportunities there. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to Article 42. All those in favor of Article 42, raise your card. All those opposed? I'm going to say the motion passes. Yes?
Let's see, I move to rescind the vote on the motion for Article 8. Reconsider, it's the same thing, you have two options, two options for phrases. I just went with the shorter one, we got kids, we got, we got places to be.
Did we already reconsider? We didn't reconsider 8? We did not reconsider 8 before? It's a motion to reconsider Article 8, which is a school budget, as you remember. A yes vote brings it up, a no vote stops the debate and even to next, next, tomorrow night. So, all those in favor of reconsidering Article 8, raise your card. All those opposed? The motion fails. Article 43.
What's that? I move to reconsider Article 42.
All those in favor of reconsidering Article 42, raise your card. All those opposed? The motion fails. Article 43.
All right. Next one. I, Brian Gressler, move to see if the town will vote to amend Section 2-29 as follows to the town's general bylaws, for the purposes of finding requirements in accordance with Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, to which all town public bodies, whatever established, shall adhere when conducting meetings open to the public. Mr. Moderator, I want to make a, a fast amendment, just kind of based on some public commentary in the week, do you want to do that first, or?
It's got to be seconded.
Okay, sorry.
Discussion, you said?
Do you want me to do a discussion first, or you want me to amend first?
You can go right to amendment if you'd like.
I'm going to, can I, I want, I want to make a motion to amend as follows. In Section 2-29.2, strike the following. Such recordings shall be provided to the town clerk within five business days of each meeting. Such recordings shall be made to, available to the, on the town website within the same five-day, uh, business day period, and replace it with, within five business days of each meeting, such recordings should be made available to the public through the town website by reasonable means, which may include links to town-controlled external platforms or cloud services, and preserved offline or otherwise retained in accordance with applicable public record, uh, record requirements. And in Section 2-29.3, in the first sentence, strike the following, shall submit copies of improvements of their meeting minutes of their meetings to the town clerk, replace with, shall make available copies of improvements on the town website, and delete the left sentence which says improvement shall be made available on the town website within the same time period.
I'll need the amendment.
What's the amendment?
This is the amendment? Give them a motion.
Yes, I move, I move to make a amendment.
Great, did you give me the first, the amendment, the article itself, the motion itself, did you give me?
Oh, sorry.
So, you're taking that?
Discussion on that, do I can explain it real quick?
Is there a second to the amendment? Maybe you could explain what you're trying to do here?
So, sorry, I'm going to do this one fast so we can, and we can discuss the, the main thing in the, in the article itself, but this was based on feedback from town officials and other people since the month that this was published. We wanted to make two quick amendments to this. The first was to eliminate the town clerk from the, the recording and meeting minute posting process. It was conveyed that that would be an undue burden on the town clerk, and that's obviously not our intent, so we got that, rid of that part of it. The second was there are concerns raised about storing recordings, so we amended that to kind of clarify that it didn't have to be all stored on the town website, it could be made available in offline platforms, so, for example, videos can be stored on YouTube with a link on the town website, and that data storage itself, for long-term, can be offline, uh, on a, a less expensive solution. So, that's the amendment.
Greg, you have a comment, question?
Well, thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator, so, obviously, this is the first time I'm seeing these amendments, but to the extent that the proposed amendment is requiring the town to create a public record through this video, that public record would have to be kept on the town's servers, it could not be kept on some remote website maintained by a third party, because that would not be consistent with the records access regulations of the supervisor of public records. So, with respect to that particular amendment, my opinion would be that that is not likely to be approved by the Attorney General as being inconsistent with state law.
I have a quick question. So, does the original article, is that okay? As opposed to what you're changing it to?
Well, so, with respect specifically to recording of meetings or the whole thing?
Just the, the part of the amendment you said is not out of scope or not allowed?
Yeah.
Is it okay the way it was in the original article?
So, the original article simply required that all meetings be recorded, it didn't say anything about how the recording should be kept, but the problem with this particular section is that if the recording equipment is unavailable, then the board or committee would be unable to meet, and so you're essentially now imposing additional burdens on public bodies in their ability to meet, because they may not have the means or the control to provide the recordings that are being requested by this particular bylaw amendment.
So where does that leave us with the amendment?
So, I mean, I think it's the ultimate decision on whether these things are legal is up to the Attorney General. So if we vote for it, and it passes, it goes to the Attorney General, and they approve whether it's legal or not. So town council could have an opinion. But that is correct, right? It's ultimately up to the Attorney General?
Yes.
Yes. So I do think that the, you know, the intent, I was going to get into this in the main article, but the intent behind all of this was to make this as low-tech and easy a solution as possible. There is no requirement in this article for there to be video or expensive recording equipment. There is a requirement to make an audio recording, which you can do on a phone for free. And post it.
Greg?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So I suppose that, yes, a committee could make a recording on their phone, but then that person's phone becomes subject to inspection under the public records law. So again, there are, you know, cost implications and practical implications to this particular section that make it impractical to be able to comply with.
So the amendment, as you're saying, is pretty much out of scope, or out of line, or not acceptable?
Well, again, I guess with respect to the amendment?
Yes.
That's your call?
Okay.
But my opinion is that it is not consistent with state law.
Okay. In which case, I guess I would not accept that, then. Amendment. If my counsel is telling me it's not going to be acceptable, then that amendment is now null and void. That leaves us with the article itself. So is there discussion on Article 43?
So I'm happy to withdraw the amendment.
Okay.
And I'll make a, I'd like to make a-
You don't have to?
No, it's fine.
It's already-
Okay. No, Attorney General aside, as he said. It's just an opinion.
He's telling me it's not acceptable.
So I would like to amend and just remove the 2-29.2, which is the recording section.
Is there a second? So I'll need that amendment right. I'll need that right.
Yep, okay.
Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry. Is there something taking place? Like, is-
He's doing another amendment. He's made a motion for another amendment.
Okay.
That has been seconded, so I have to act on it.
Okay, I've got it in writing.
No, that, this amendment is no good. He's going to take something else out, I believe. So the new amendment is striking out 2-29.2, recording of meetings, and also 2-29.3. Submission of minutes?
2-29.3 to remove the town clerk from the minute process.
Say that again?
2-29.3 to remove the town clerk from the minute process, striking all of the recording Remote access stays.
We're finding more. Going to go back. I'm going to have Greg talk to that.
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So with respect to 2-29.3, submission of minutes, the Attorney General's open meeting law regulations define when meeting minutes have to be approved by a public body. And what those regulations say is that the minutes have to be approved by the public body within its next three meetings, or 45, or 30 days, whichever is longer. So here, this within 45 days of the meeting, or five business days of the next meeting, this is in direct conflict with the regulations of the Attorney General.
Ms. Moderator, open meeting law says that it has to be submitted in a timely manner. It does not define any timeframe associated with that.
So they want to postpone both of these amendments in the article?
So I would add that the 45 days are in use by other towns currently.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to postpone the amendment in the article.
There's a motion to, is this to the amendment or the article? Excuse me?
Whatever you prefer.
You don't want to know what I prefer. Let's talk about the amendment, because that's what's open.
Okay. And the amendment is currently to remove the second section there regarding the recording, and then change the third section of-
Submission of minutes, yes.
The town clerk. Okay. So regarding this amendment, which continues to keep the section labeled "remote access," I would support whatever amendment we need to do to solve the problem at hand that this is trying to do, even if there are some complications to work through. The problem we're trying to solve here, we as a people, I didn't bring this forward, though I did sign the form, the problem we're trying to solve here is that we live in a day and age where remote access to meetings is something that has come to be expected. It's something that we're used to. It's something that we have easily available. The technology does not take anything huge. It does not have to be a whole 1623 studio, though we love Joan and we appreciate all her hard work. Go Joan. It doesn't have to be that. It can be very minimal. And I can say this from experience, because I do the admin work for the planning board, I run these meetings, so I know what's involved in these. So the problem that's trying to be solved here is to make sure that everybody has the ability to experience a meeting through remote access first. So whether it's by Zoom or some other form of communication. Second, the attempt here, I believe, was to have recording of the meeting, so that someone who can't experience it in real time can then go back and experience it later. And the third, the submission of minutes, is an attempt to really fix the fact that a lot of our town boards do not post their minutes in a timely fashion, according to anyone's timeframe. So regarding this amendment, I can say, if we need to let go of one or two of these pieces in order to keep the most important part, which to me is remote access, I serve on another committee, it's not always fun to be on camera. Every single meeting we have for school committee is recorded and broadcast, and yes, people come back and ask you about it later. But that's the way it is. You do get used to it. It is a change, and it's something that we can do with very little investment, with shared resources between departments. And especially if you get rid of the recording part of that, you're not even dealing with keeping files on hand. So the problem we're trying to solve here is making sure that our minutes are being posted, and that people are able to access a meeting, in recognition that not every department has a paid administrative assistant. So it's really important to me to be aware of that, that there are lots of boards and committees that do not have someone paid to do this thing. It's the volunteers on those boards doing this work. So let's keep it simple and keep it easy, but let's not throw this away, because it feels a little confusing as we're working through the amendments right now. That's my comment.
I think this is terribly confusing, just so you know. So I'm in favor of not doing this article whatsoever. I'm not sure how I'd get to that process, unless someone makes a motion, because this, as it's written, either way, is very confusing to people in this room. And I think needs to go back and get written properly, and maybe with the guidance of legal if it needed.
Did the town have an opportunity to review this?
I sent this to review to legal. I was told it couldn't be reviewed by legal.
So this, you were told this couldn't be-
I make a motion to indefinitely postpone.
So I just have a question-
This is the amendment first. We're still on the amendment, so I need it. That would be to postpone the amendment.
I have a question about the legal.
We have a motion on, I have a motion on the floor, so I'm going to take the motion on the floor.
What's the motion?
The motion-
Do you make a motion to indefinitely postpone this amendment?
I was at the microphone first. Yes, I was.
All those in favor of indefinitely postponing the amendment, raise your card. All opposed? The motion passes. Now the main article. As it stands, unamended.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Our attorney indicated that the timeline for turning around minutes is within 45 days or within three meetings, correct?
Thirty.
Thirty days?
Thirty.
And within three meetings?
[inaudible].
So that is the legal requirement. Why is that not the current practice of all of our town boards?
Because someone has to complain to the Attorney General if they're not doing it yet.
Correct.
Well, for example, in the middle of March, I emailed the Finance Committee to ask for some minutes. I received no response. I followed up three days later to our town administrator and the chair. I received no response. I followed up two weeks later and received no response. In April, I went to a Board of Selectmen meeting and made the comment that I had still not received the minutes that I requested dating back to December of 2024. And it was not until I went to the meeting and made that comment that I received an email from the chair explaining why those minutes were still not available.
My response would be that I think any complaint would go to the Attorney General, and they would handle it for you. I think the complaint needs to go to the Attorney General, if it can't get enforced here.
Why should I have to put a complaint to the Attorney General when we are a small town? I mean-
Because he's the regulated body?
This is the thing, though. This is why we need rules like this to make our minutes accessible and our meetings accessible.
Article 43. Go ahead, Betsy. This is Article 43.
Thank you. I know I'm wearing a camouflage jacket and everything.
You were blending right in.
So-
Name.
Nick Ellis, 10 Rocky Hill Road. I'm also the Chair of the DBW Commission. You know, I am all for open meetings. I am all for participation by the public in our meetings. I think it's a fantastic idea, and any way that we can make it happen is a good thing. However, the article that we are talking about now is, has not been prepared in a way that is thoughtful and in keeping with the law, is essentially what we've been told. So I would suggest that the folks who are interested in proceeding with this idea and solving this problem, come back again later, when they've got a more well-thought-out legal article that we can vote on and approve, that we won't be defending to the Attorney General later on. Thanks.
Same sentiments. I would like to move that we indefinitely postpone this article.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed?
I was at the mic.
There was a motion I have to act on. It's not debatable.
No, this is exactly the problem that's going on.
There's a-
I was here. You've let everyone else do it. Everyone else, any other time there's something going on-
Article 10.
Anytime someone else's mic is on this.
Article 10.
This is the problem with this town.
Article 10.
This is the law right in front of this board.
Alva, Article 10.
I think I got it. I, Alva Ingharow, move that the town fix the salary and compensation of each of the elected officers of the town as required by the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended for fiscal year 2026, in accordance with the recommendations of the Personnel Board report.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of Article 10, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article 12.
I'm 11.
I mean, 11, sorry. It says 11.
I, Ruth Aprey, move that the town vote to transfer from the Town Septic Betterment Fund, the sum of $37,977, for the purpose of making necessary payments to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust during fiscal year 2026, in accordance with the terms of repayment for community septic management program loan funds.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of Article 11, raise your card. Any opposed? Article, motion passes. Article 12.
Hello. I, Nick Ellis, move that Article 12 be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing Article 12, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article 13.
Lucky 13. I, Nick Ellis, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,703,858 for fiscal year 2026. Sewer Enterprise Fund budget as follows. Debt repayment, principal and interest, the sum of $246,763 from sewer betterments, and the sum of $328,911 to be raised by taxation, and funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the sewer department, $1,128,184 from departmental receipts, all as indicated in the Finance Committee report, and to authorize Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within the sewer department from salary lines to salary lines, and from expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second? Discussion?
It's our sewer operating budget.
All those in favor of Article 13, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article 14.
I, Nick Ellis, move that Article 14 be indefinitely postponed.
All those in favor of postponing Article 14, raise your card. Any opposed? It is postponed. Article 15.
I, Nick Ellis, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $993,775 for the fiscal year 2026. Water Enterprise Fund budget as follows. Debt repayment, principal and interest, the sum of $79,632 from departmental receipts, and raised by taxation, the sum of $34,129, and funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the water department, $880,014 from departmental receipts, all as indicated in the Finance Committee report, and to authorize Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within the water department from salary lines to salary lines, and expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second? Discussion?
It is our water operating budget.
You're not standing to discuss this? No, okay. All those in favor of Article 15, raise your card. Any opposed? Article passes. Article 16.
Considered before Article 16.
Article 130, you said?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Over there.
This is to move Article 130 into in front of 16. All those in favor of moving Article 13 to now, raise your card. Any opposed? The motion passes. I know, Lisa, I know. I saw you waving. Article 30.
I, Ruth Aprey, move that the town vote to transfer from Article 20 of the Fall Town Meeting of November 18, 2019, MS4 Stormwater Compliance, the sum of $50,000, and from Free Cash, the sum of $343,750, for a total appropriation of $393,750, to construct a new municipal fuel depot on town property located at 30 Landing Road, MAP 135, Lot 26, which shall include retaining engineering services- which shall include retaining engineering services for the preparation of the project's specifications and bid documents and oversight of the construction project, retaining a contractor to perform the work, obtaining any required licenses and permits, purchasing and installing equipment, and anything incidental related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion, Ruth?
There is. So this is something that was brought forth between our Police Department, Fire Department, and the DPW. They're looking for an opportunity to be able to buy gas and diesel fuel twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. There are some that will say that this is not necessary. We have gas in town. That's true, but those gas stations do close. I think Richel closes at ten or eleven, and Gaybrook is not open in the evening hours. Our Public Safety have been amazing about making sure that they fill up at the end of each shift and before the weekends so that they can take care of those needs. However, there is a cost savings. We've been told for many years from these departments that they need access more often, and the cost savings comes from being able to buy fuel off the state bid. So this is not just a matter of convenience. There's also a liability aspect. If you're in the middle of a storm event and you lose power, you don't have generators, you're now driving out of town to go find that fuel. So this allows our Public Safety to stay in town, respond to emergencies quicker, and not be driving mileage to get out of town. Then, again, the cost savings by buying fuel off the state bid, there is a break-even point where this will actually pay for itself.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Janet Carlson, twenty-four Apple Street. Why on earth would we even think about spending three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars on a non-essential project like this at a time when we have to consider how to afford such truly essential things as education of our children and getting our town's personnel wages up to par? Three hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars is more than half of the override we just voted on. This money could really help where it's needed in our budget. This proposed project reminds me, actually, of the streetlights debacle, something else we didn't need to spend money on. A municipal fuel depot makes little sense when other solutions are available right here in Essex, and they're far, far less expensive to us taxpayers. The new Ernie's, called Sam's Auto, sells diesel. Let's support one of our precious few businesses, and we all know it's time to show our businesses more love. I've heard the justification for a depot, a fuel depot, is that they, the DPW, Public Safety, must have access to fuel twenty-four seven. Why? Is it because they can't plan ahead for weekends or a storm? Maybe Sam is willing to open for public safety vehicles on a Sunday. But what makes even more sense to me is we get a simple fuel tank, like an oil tank many of us have in our basements, installed at the Public Safety Building or at the transfer station where there's a generator, and it stays filled and ready for after-hours use. The beauty of this solution is that it costs us just the price of a storage tank. I urge you to vote no on Article thirty. Thank you.
Tom Daniel, twenty-seven Pond Street, had a question for the Select Board member who spoke, Ruth Apprien. You said there's a break-even point, and when does that, how far out is that?
So unfortunately, when I asked certain departments to provide me with the mileage, I had one department that refused to give me the mileage for the Finance Committee to be able to do that analysis. So unfortunately, I can't provide you with that information.
Do you have any approximation as if it's five years or twenty-five years?
I don't.
You don't? Okay. It's unfortunate that we don't have that information, because I agree-
You thought it was five to ten.
Sorry?
One of the Finance Committee members believes it would be five to ten years.
Five to ten years. Okay. Thank you.
Dan? Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. You go.
No fighting.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
What's an ad?
Eric Glith, Lowland Farm. I dug into this a little bit the last couple of days, and I want to echo what this young lady said earlier. Four hundred thousand dollars now, when we're talking about six hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the school, just doesn't make any sense. Understand the need to have fuel at a lot of hours of the time, of the night. I was told that there was not one situation over the last year where this actually would have been needed. Hamilton has recently built a fuel depot very similar to this, and I don't know if we've explored opportunities to partner with them for the rare opportunity or time we need to need this excess fuel, or if we've talked to the mobile station or any of the other gas stations in town to say, in the rare event an emergency occurs, will you open your doors for us, even if we pay you five thousand, ten thousand dollars a year just to have that on standby? It seems to me that there are a lot of other opportunities to explore before we spend four hundred thousand dollars on this unnecessary expense. Thank you.
Dan Doucet, John Wise Avenue. Just for clarification, we do have several gas stations. Two of them, we spoke about, are only gasoline, not diesel fuel. Sam's does have diesel fuel. But prior to that, when Ernie operated it, a member of our department, it was pretty easy to get fuel. Things have changed. We're not sure how long the gentlemen on Main Street will continue to pump gas. We can't wait until we don't have those, that asset available. All the DPW trucks, mostly except for the small pickup trucks, take diesel fuel. All our bigger engines take diesel fuel. It probably doesn't affect the police as much, but the right thing for this community is to be able to stand up on its own in an emergency situation or a state of emergency and be able to drive a mile down the street and get fuel and not ten miles, which could take you an hour and a half. So taking that resource out of your community to drive to Ipswich or Hamilton or wherever, when there's a storm or an event going on that you shouldn't be out in anyways, to send those people that distance is irresponsible, not only to them but to the equipment. This is a necessity. This is a emergency management planning activity that you should be able to be resilient, this community, and stand up on its own when it happens. This is an innuendity. If we don't do it now, we're going to be forced to do it later. I don't like to say forced, because then that always comes back to get you later. But in the event that this private vendor goes out of business, we are not going to have any other options. So this isn't something that should be kicked down the road. I think when Lisa was a select person, we talked about this back then, ten years ago. Well, it kind of did get kicked down the road. But this is the time. This isn't taxation money. This is free cash that can't be used to displace costs in the budget. It only can be used for capital projects like this. This is a very necessary thing. Thank you.
Nick Ellis, Rocky Hill Road, also the Chair of the DPW Commission. So I just, you know, aside from convenience, aside from our ability to refuel plow trucks in the middle of a blizzard, I want to reiterate, because it seems like what some people are most concerned about here is the financial aspect. I appreciate that four hundred thousand dollars upfront is a lot of money, but from a fundamental economic standpoint, if we do this now, in the long run, we spend less money. So all of the other points being made are one hundred percent valid. The fact that we need a plow truck to be able to go and get fuel a half a mile away instead of ten miles away, when it's snowing and you need to get out of your house, you're going to be happy it's there. Regardless of that, financially, it just makes sense. Thank you.
Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Lynch, sixteen R County Road. Did not expect to be up at these microphones tonight. Just a clarification to Chief Doucet, I don't think, I think we want to clarify, free cash certainly can be used to offset any part of the budget we want to. Mr. Zbriky? Sorry, Mr. Moderator. I was looking at him, not calling on him, but-
That's okay.
He's out of his seat, so we'll just go with it.
He just, he senses it, so it's okay.
Yeah. We have that telepathy over the years.
It's correct that free cash is not prevented from being spent for operational purposes. It's just not good financial practice.
Yep, sorry.
You're correct. I'm saying you're right, Mark.
No one ever said best practices were for capital items only. We developed that over the last few years.
So what I'm saying is, one-time money, it's better to spend that on a one-time reason. Otherwise, you could introduce a structural deficit into the budget.
And a one-time correction could also be used. I don't mean to debate here, but-
No, I'm just saying, I'm agreeing with you that it can be used for operational purposes.
And it is, and it's of appropriate use. Thank you.
Wes? My name's Wesley Burnham, twenty-two County Road. For those people that have been in Essex for a while, they remember Terminal Garage. Terminal Garage was parked right next to the old fire station, Texaco Station. We had all three, we had Hi-Tes, Regula, and Diesel. We ran all the school buses. We had four snowplows that were, we had in operation during snowstorms, bunch of other stuff. What a lot of people didn't realize is, is being next door, we ran a cable over, and we're tied in to the fire station emergency generator. So in Storma sixty-nine, when we lost power for nigh on the two weeks, Storma seventy-eight was almost the same. It was like ten days. There's been other snowstorms in between. We were still able to plow Essex and keep access for all of the emergency responders and most of the people in town, because we were tied in, and we were actually feeding the generator with our fuel. If there was a storm coming, we'd make sure that the tanks were full. So we had four thousand, three, four thousand gallon tanks out there, which that's a lot of plowing, that's a lot of generating. This would put us back on the same solid footing that disappeared when, basically, it really disappeared when we tore the building down. But John Coughlin bought the property from us in the nineties. Whitey was still there running, running the garage, so we still had that capability up until about the nineties. We haven't had it since. We'd like to get it back, at least me as a, as a taxpayer. And as a former first responder, I was forty-seven years on the fire department, working with Danny and the rest of them. So I would like to encourage everybody to go ahead. Let's move ahead, build our own little gas station. We're only going to have two flavors, unleaded and diesel. So we're going to keep it simple, and there is a cost savings. Gas stations don't not make money off of fuel, so right, right off the top, we're saving some. I don't know what the numbers are. I've never run them. But I employ a goal, let's pass this, get it in, get it in progress, and let's get it done and get back to where we are. I enjoy being more self-deficient, independent. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Antonella Muniz. I live on twenty Harlow Street. I one hundred and ten, one hundred and ten percent support this article. If you have ever called nine-one-one and had these amazing first responders show up to your house in seconds, you would approve this three times over. If they're telling us they need a fuel depot for our safety, we need to give them the tools they need to keep us safe. I've called nine-one-one, unfortunately, three times. I kid you not, I have a small house. I walked from my kitchen to my front door, and there was someone already there. Further, I believe it was Officer Shamshack showed up a week later to check on my son. They need the fuel depot, then let's give it to them.
Yep, we're here.
Hello, Mike Flynn, Pond Street. For me, first and last, this is a public safety issue. If our departments need this to effectively manage and service this town, especially with some of the gas stations being, changing hands, then that's top of my list. That being said, the secondary point here is the fact that we can find a cost savings that by spending four hundred thousand dollars, that will run for the next twenty, thirty, forty years, however long this depot is, that's a rare thing. To be able to take a sliver of the budget out, to take that profit motive out of the gas equation, to buy on the state bid, is very powerful. And in where we are challenged with budgets that are increasing, to find an area where we can sensibly and safely take money out of the equation and a cost savings for the people of Essex, I think that's, that in conjunction with the public safety aspect of it, makes it a win-win.
Teresa Whitman, eight Lufkin Street, I have a question and then a comment. My question is, I may have missed this in the intro. Where's the proposed location for this? Behind the transfer station? So on the town-owned property that you're proposing for the school? Or just very near?
Anyone?
Okay.
Go ahead, Burnham.
Lou? Okay. At this point, if you go to the transfer station property, you'll see a bunch of bins for donations, and there's a little blue shed as well. It's going to be in the area where that little blue shed is. Trucks will come around, they'll go around the, what they call the old DP, the temporary DPW barn, and come out the other side, or they could come in that way and go out. So it's going to be centrally located within the DPW yard.
Thank you. So my comment on this is that while I am really concerned about the comments made that you are claiming there is a return on investment, maybe five to ten years down the line, we think it's coming, but we don't have the information, we weren't able to get it from the places in time for town meeting, that's a big concern to me. The timing of this with the fact that we do have an override and that we're, we're stripping so much from other town budgets is also a big concern to me. But in the spirit of setting an example for what kind of leadership I would like to see and how I would like to see towns support, townspeople support one another and support the departments, I can appreciate the comment that I asked a respected person who's involved with public safety, who responded, what that person thought, who responded that they shouldn't be reliant on a private business to have to get their materials. And I think that it is important that if they are telling us, the departments are telling us what they need, and it's been vetted, I hope thoroughly, that that's something that I want to support. We have the free cash available, so I'm going to be in support of this, and I thank you for answering my question.
Brian Gressler, thirty Choate. I'm going to echo some of what Teresa just said. I have no problem with the idea. I am concerned that we don't have an actual cost-benefit analysis to make a sound decision. And by that, I mean not just an analysis of the mileage and the fuel cost, but an analysis of the risk and the liability that goes with burying a tank underground and all those other things, and construction, and all those other things that are associated with this. Thank you.
Betsy?
Can I just clarify that?
Sure.
Betsy, I'm going to let you go. Just to clarify, these will not be below-ground tanks. These are above-ground tanks.
I'm just wondering if anybody is worried that it's right at the mouth, I mean, at the head of the river that we're talking about. And I wondered if we've explored maybe doing it over by the safety building, where there's wetland below, but it's at least upland where the building is. So I don't know if other sites have been investigated, and I'm wondering about that.
The consensus of the Fire Department, Police Department, and the DPW is that it makes most sense to do it at the DPW yard, and that's why we arrived there. With respect to the environmental concern, this tank will be a two-compartment tank, so there'll be diesel on one side, there'll be gasoline on the other side. It's a double-walled tank, and there'll have to be detection between the walls if there's ever, even the start of a leak, an alarm goes off. The above-ground tanks have been thoroughly tested. People have, of course, gone away from underground tanks, and there is not a lot of concern with respect to a spill of that kind.
No more discussion. All those in favor of Article thirty, please raise your card. All those opposed? The motion passes. Article sixteen, you got, you know, twenty minutes to get through-
Article 16, you got, you know, 20 minutes to get through all of these, go ahead. Yes, Lisa?
Before I read the motion, the planning board has nine articles, Articles 16 through 24. And I just would like to report at the outset that the planning board voted unanimously to support all nine of them.
Excellent. And some of these require two-thirds vote and some majority, and I'll explain as each article comes up.
Article 16, I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws to make a number of non-substantive edits and/or revisions for formatting, spelling, grammar, and consistent terminology throughout Chapter 6, all shown in the town meeting handout for Article 16. And further, that the town clerk be authorized to make all necessary clerical changes, including redesignating sections and paragraphs as appropriate.
Is there a second? Discussion, Lisa?
The, um, the, the changes are all just grammar, punctuation, proper spelling, organizing headings and indents and things like that. It's all been on the town website for over a month, available to people. It has been reviewed by Amy Akel, our town clerk, by Teresa, our administrator, who have coordinated to verify, and I've looked it over myself as well, to verify that there is nothing substantive in any of these edits. It's really just housekeeping. The reason for bringing it to town meeting, even though Amy could make the changes herself, is that if Amy makes those changes, they have to become footnotes in the bylaw, which, given how many there were, there would just be pages upon pages of footnote, so it just didn't make sense. So this is really, I mean, it's, it's a lot that Teresa did, but it's a nothing article as far as changes to the bylaw.
Any further discussion? Ed?
Ed Neil, 15 Western, I'm gonna vote against this. I urge you all to vote against it. This is a, um, an unprecedented article in front of you. The, the article does not contain the changes in the wording in the bylaws. Somebody took the whole section, the zoning section of the bylaw, and they went through and they changed wording. And as Lisa says, a lot of it is not substantial, as they got it right in the article, it's not substantial. They put hyphens in where there weren't, they took hyphens out where there were, they capitalized things, they changed things like single-family home to home or residence, single-family. They did those things. But they also changed other words and they referred, in some places, the, the word bylaw is used and they changed it to, uh, they changed the bylaw to, it says this chapter instead, which to my interpretation would mean that the entire bylaw doesn't apply only that chapter. Additionally, they took places where there were definitions included in a section and they took them out and the explanation is, you can get that in the definitions section, which is true, but it's not as convenient to just have the definition right there in front of you in the section that you're looking into. Additionally, they, um, in, in, on the, in order for you to look at this, and I'm sorry that, I don't know how many other people went through this, make your eyes bleed, but the, um, they're, they're, on the, on the online version, when you read through it, the, the section that was related to the moratorium that was repealed last year, it's all in gray. It's in, it's in that section, it's all in gray. And then right beneath it, the whole section that talks about multiple principal buildings on one lot is also in gray in that. And that's not here. And so to me, if that document that I read online, which is the only one that you folks or I could look at to determine what this all means, are we deleting that whole section relative to multiple buildings on one lot? I move that we don't approve this. Let them go back and come, come with something that you can look at, that you, without having to go through this arcane process to figure out what's actually changing and the why. I'd really like to know why. The word, um, the words chapter were changed out, or the word bylaw was changed to chapter or section. And also, there was, there are several places where they took the word shall out and they replaced it with the word will. Well, my understanding of law is that the word shall is mandatory. It has more force of law than will. And the sections that they changed it to will were sections where the planning board would have discretionary decisions to make over permits, special permits and things. So that instead of the shall not be detrimental to the neighborhood, it would be will not be. Now, I don't know why they changed that, but I think that it deserves to be voted down tonight. Thank you.
Do you need to respond, Lisa?
Teresa's gonna, the, the grayed out ones are other articles that are here this evening. So they're gonna potentially change here, so we didn't change them in that portion.
Teresa Whitman, 8 Lufkin Street, responding, just to answer the question, since I did the bulk of that. Yes, online, we decided, we decided when this process was taking place, that the most efficient way to make this happen would be to have the versions online, both in the traditional black strikeout with the bold that you're used to, and also a version where that's red, so that it's easier to see and understand. But that bringing forth 60-page document for everyone to review the night of town meeting was actually a less efficient way of doing it. As far as the grayed out blocks, anything grayed out in there is something that's under consideration tonight, and that's why it wasn't addressed in the, in the moment. In terms of anything else in there, the changes were made for consistency. So across this entire chapter, which it is, it's Chapter 6, the zoning bylaws are Chapter 6. Over the course of years, you've had a rotating cast of characters making changes each, each time something came up for vote at town meeting. And the voice comes through, the changes come through, the typos come through, because once those get approved, then someone else gets their hand on it. We do our bylaws as a Word doc that travels around, just so you know. So the goal here was to implement some consistency, where throughout the chapter, sometimes something was a chapter or a bylaw or bylaws, the idea was to make some consistency. We standardized a whole bunch of formatting and put that, those standardization options in a one-pager that was available back, starting back in February. It also was online. So this is something that, again, we did every, everything possible, I did everything possible to make sure this was available for consumption, met, poor Amy, for a number of hours to go through every single one, same with Lisa to go through every single one. If there are concerns, I, I have invited townspeople to, to look at this and get their take on it. But I do wish you had come to me in advance, we could have talked through some of those things. This was just the first step, there was nothing changed about tables, there's a whole list of things that weren't changed. But the goal here is to make sure that this chapter is professional and clean and moves forward representing the work that the planning board is doing and is accessible in a way that it's easy to use. So that's really the only goal. There was nothing underneath, no attempt at subversion of certain sections where the planning board has more will or not. My eyes were bleeding on this as well. I assure you, I had no bandwidth for trying to do any ulterior motives here. It's an effort toward making a more professional document. And we can continue to revise it as town meetings come up, because certainly we can't do it outside of that.
Tom Daniel, 27 Pond Street, I just wanted to speak in support of this. I think it just makes good sense, as Teresa just enumerated, it's just cleaning up what's there. And zoning documents across the Commonwealth, it is incremental change over time and at some point in time, you have to stop and just clean it up. It's not substantive in change, it's just making it a better working document, so I encourage folks to vote. And I'd like to move the question, or call the question, what am I doing?
Go, one more.
Oh, there's one. Sorry.
You can't talk and then move the question, you gotta do it first. All right, Mr. Moderator? The, in context, the entire floodplain district language, the entire chapter was changed and edited, and it's all in here. It's all in the warrant for you to read. You're voting tonight, unless you're like me and you read that whole thing, you're voting on something that you don't know what it is. I would have contacted, uh, the young lady if I understood that she was ahead honcho on all these changes, but I thought it was just the planning board. So, uh, I just don't think it should, there's no, if, in their own words, they're telling you, this is inconsequential. So if you vote it down tonight, it isn't like we're cutting off all chances to revise the zoning bylaws and make them more professional. But it would give you an opportunity to be better informed about what you're actually voting on and why those word changes were put in there and whether or not that gray thing has any significance on the warrant tonight. Thank you.
Okay, Article 16. All those in favor of Article 16, raise your card. But this is actually a two-thirds vote, just so you know. Article 16, two-thirds vote. All those opposed? The motion passes by two-thirds. 17. Go, Lisa, go.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section 6-7.6.1.2, Temporary Moratorium on Business and Industrial Conversions, as shown in Article 17 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Lisa?
This moratorium was put in place in 2021, it doesn't even matter. It expired January 1st of 20, of this year, of 2025. We didn't seek to extend the moratorium, the Attorney General wasn't going to let us anyway. So all this is, is taking the moratorium language out of the bylaw because it's no longer applicable. And as long as it lives in the bylaw, it's confusing to people who don't understand the history of why it was put in and why it's still there. So this, like other temporary things that have been in the bylaw, will be taken out. The number will remain and what will be put there in place of it is deleted in its entirety at annual town meeting 2025.
Further discussion, does look at, all those in favor of Article 17, raise your card. Also, two-thirds. All those opposed? The motion passes by two-thirds.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend Section 6-3.4.2, Floodplain Overlay District of the Town Zoning Bylaw, as shown in Article 18 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant, provided, however, that the town clerk shall be authorized to insert the most current versions of the Essex County Flood Insurance Rate Maps Firms and the Essex County Flood Insurance Study, FIS, issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, with any changes made on or before July 8th, 2025.
Is there a second?
Uh, discussion here is Brendan.
So like many towns, Essex participates in the federal flood insurance program. And in order to, which is called the National Flood Insurance Program, in order for the town to remain eligible for residents of the community, to get federal flood insurance, periodically, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, requires changes to the bylaw of the community. That's the case here and we went back and forth with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, DCR, which is the state's, uh, state agency that handles this as kind of a pass-through from FEMA to make sure that it's all in order. And what you have before you is what the ingredients that, that DCR indicated are necessary to keep the town of Essex's bylaw in compliance with being able to get flood insurance.
Any further discussion?
Many communities in, that are under the floodplain FEMA rules, like we were up till this article, which is, if you add them all up, it's like nine pages long of what I think is gobbledygook, when in fact, what we had before was a page in a paragraph that we used to change, accepting the new flood maps that would come in. I don't know how many, every time they make the changes. The threat by DCR, which is a state agency, has nothing to do with FEMA, is that we are not compliant with what FEMA is requesting and FEMA could say, we're not going to insure you anymore. Well, there's dozens of towns that are also in FEMA that have not accepted this yet. I think if all we had to say is a line that says, we'll comply with the law, that's enough. And by adding this, it's onerous, some of the sections require the planning board to give notices, um, there is other parts in there that require, um, um, some, a lot of things that don't apply to the town, dunes, um, cars that drive on the dunes, we don't have any in, in Essex, but we were adding all this language because DCR says to. I'm actually gonna vote no for it. If it needs to come back at town meeting in the fall, it comes back at town meeting in the fall. But I think this is another state, large ass, lots of language, that all we have to do is comply with the law. And that's all it needs to say and that we accept the new maps like we've done for dozens and dozens of years.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 18, raise your card. This is a two-thirds as well. All those opposed? Article passes by two-thirds vote. Article 19.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section 6-7.1, erection of more than one principal structure on a lot, as shown in Article 19 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second?
So Article, uh, so Section 6-7.1, as shown in the bylaw, exists in our bylaw now, I mean, as shown in the article, exists in our bylaw now and addresses erection of more than one principal lot on a struc, a structure on a lot. So some of the edits you see in the text that exists are just, again, consistent terminology and spelling, so that's the first two, is just changing that. And then what we're actually adding is requirements and certificate of occupancy are standardized there. And what we're adding to the end of this article is a requirement that says, all limitation requirements of this section shall also apply to single-family and/or two-family condominium dwellings, with the, the same language that's in the, in the rest of the section. The reason for doing this is just to clarify that condominium, so properties can condo, can go condo and put houses on a common lot. And that technically falls under this section, but it's not always clear. So this is really just to clarify that. This language also applies to properties that are essentially condoed, where different people own the different houses in a condo association, which is different than if someone owns a piece of property and all the buildings on it. But, so this is just to standardize it and make condos consistent with the way our bylaw addresses having multiple structures on a lot.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 19, also two-thirds, sorry. Article 19. All those opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Actually, it was unanimous. Article 20.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, Section 6-3.3.3.51, Permitted Principal Uses, and 6-3.3.51.2, as shown in Article 20 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion?
The first, the first change here is just to add another period in the numbering, so that's in the title of it. And then this clarifies, uh, the definition of residential, which was dwelling units and apartments as part of mixed use, to change it to multifamily dwellings, units or apartments, three or four by right, or five or more by special permit as part of mixed use. The definition that is being changed here is exactly what's shown in the bylaw in the dimensional and density table that's in there. So this is making the definition of residential consistent with language that already exists in the bylaw. in the bylaw about how mixed use and multifamily are defined. So this is, again, clarification.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 20, raise your card. This is majority, not two-thirds. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article 21.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, section 6-3.3.5, which now has a point one, and it permitted principal uses, and 6-3.3.3.51.4, as shown in Article 21 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion? Lisa?
Yep. So this addresses in the downtown district, which is where this, where mixed use is allowed. And this talks about adding to the definition of mixed use, again, making it consistent with the table, the density and dimensional regulations table. And then we are adding here language around mixed use, which further clarifies how that mixed use would be interpreted. So right now, the bylaw says that mixed use would feature a non-residential use and doesn't provide any guidance around the amount of, it's essentially commercial and residential. Doesn't provide any, right now, it doesn't provide any guidance around how much commercial you would need. So we've had, for example, a developer for a property down Main Street come in, and this is over a year ago, and said he wanted to put seven townhouses in, and he was going to put a nine-by-12 room and call it an art gallery so that he could get the mixed use setbacks. So what happens in the bylaw is that for, if you're strictly multifamily, you have a 50-foot front setback and you have 30-foot side setbacks. If you're a mixed-use property, you have a seven-foot front setback and six-foot side back setbacks. So you have a lot more property that you can develop if you're mixed use. So what the developer was saying with his little nine-by-12 room as a gallery was permissible under the way the bylaw, it was written. So what we want to do, since the downtown district is trying to encourage commercial uses on the first floor, is to actually do that by specifying a limited, a minimum area that the commercial component of a mixed-use property would need to meet. So we've established, and Val, our town planner, has done a lot of work on this to try and find what was consistent in the town of Essex. And we've come up with 30% of the first floor or 950 square feet, whichever is larger. Throw my glasses and read it. And then also requiring that 30% of the building frontage on the side facing the main abutting street would be non-residential. And then we added a third caveat, that any deviation from either of those two criteria would require special permit. So if there is a situation where a person has an odd lot or something, and they're still complying with the intent of the law but don't necessarily meet exactly our numbers, they would be able to come and do that through a special permit. So it's not an absolute for the other two numbers, but it is a way to ensure that if people are getting the advantage of mixed-use setbacks, that they're actually working with the spirit of the, the bylaw and, and offering the town residential, I'm sorry, commercial, commercial area on the first ground floor.
Wes?
I move to amend Article 21 as follows. Basically, all I'm going to do is, well, let me read it. See if the town vote will amend town zoning bylaws 6-3.3.51, permitted uses as shown below. The first paragraph that she's already put in, I'm okay with, that's not a problem. Where it begins, I want to delete, where it starts with, as of, as of right with a site plan review permit, allowed as right of view, basically, the whole section that talks about the 30% and the minimum 950 square feet. The whole second page of this article, I want to eliminate.
I'll need that writing. So striking out?
Striking out the whole second part of that.
633351? Is that what you said?
So we're still on Article 21, as Lisa has explained. Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article?
Yes.
What?
I'm still getting it.
Oh, go ahead.
I apologize, I screwed up the amendment. Barely printed the wrong page. So, in any case, getting back to what's going on here. I was deeply involved in creating the downtown district. It was six, seven, eight, 10 years, I forget how long we worked on it. What I don't like about this is when we made that, the bylaw, the intent was to allow more flexibility and smaller standards in the downtown districts to maximize or allow better usage of what was already developed. The net, the intent was never to insist that every major project had to be mixed use. That's still up to the choice of the developer, the property owner, and we shouldn't be dictating mandatory sections of their property be used for certain things. Dead set against that. My intent was to eliminate this whole second portion, throw it away. Fixing the typo errors in the first part is no big deal. If we shut the whole thing down, they can always bring it back later. I found a couple other things when I was looking at Article 16 that need to be fixed. So they can fix it next time around, either in the fall or next spring. But I'd like to implore everybody, let's turn this thing down. The intent was to do that, to try to regulate and insist that type of thing. It was supposed to allow the flexibility to maximize or to create opportunities for property owners. I'll leave it at that.
Tom Daniel Ponstry, have a question for the Planning Board Chair. This isn't requiring that properties be developed as mixed use, correct? It's just saying that if a property is being developed as mixed use, as new construction or substantial shape renovation, that in order to have the benefits of the mixed-use zoning, they need to have actual functional commercial space? The goal is to ensure that if someone's taking advantage of mixed use, that there's actually active ground floor use. Is that correct? Is that the intent?
That's correct. We're, because the setbacks for mixed use are so much smaller than they are for multifamily, like I said, the example, we had a developer was going to come in and put seven townhouses on in the tiny little building, and we would have had to approve that because it met the criteria. There is a, it's mixed use. But it's, it's, he's using a lot more of the property than he would if he was just multifamily, which is what he's actually building with a little broom closet that he's calling a gallery. So, so that's the kind of thing. And, and again, we provide these criteria as minimums for the regular, someone who's coming along to, to try and do it with, in the spirit of it. But we also do have the opportunity for the special permit if it can't be met. So we're not precluding someone from an unusual situation, but we're, we're saying, if you're going to take advantage of these setbacks, be truly mixed use, not just token mixed use.
Right, because that active ground floor mixed use is consistent with the character of downtown. It's consistent with the character of downtown to have active business.
Right. And, and, you know, we all know that sometimes businesses are struggling downtown, so the whole idea is to try and keep the business community more vibrant in the downtown area. And you don't do that by putting in a token gallery and building seven townhomes, so.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 21, raise your card. This is, oh.
Did he make an amendment?
What?
Amendment.
The amendment.
His amendment was, no, I didn't. He went through his amendment, it wasn't even, it wasn't seconded, so it's okay. We're in the main article. All those in favor of Article 21, please raise your card. This is majority as well. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. So we're at 10 of 11. Got a handful left. Couple more zoning sense of the meeting. You guys want to keep going? Or you want? Yes? Because otherwise, we got to come back and finish up tomorrow. We're going to keep going. Article 22.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning map and zoning bylaws, section 6-3.3.3.10, district map, as shown in Article 22 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Second? Discussion?
This is a change in the boundary of the downtown district. And it is, right now, 11 Southern Avenue is in the general use district, and this would change the boundary and put it in the downtown district. 11 Southern Avenue is one of what town people have called the Allen properties, which were five, nine, five, seven, nine, and 11. It's late, I'm sorry. And those four were sold to one individual to redevelop. The, this particular property, 11 Southern Avenue, is, is 34 feet deep and 66 feet wide, so it's, it's literally probably the smallest lot in all of Essex. And when the downtown district was originally established in 2010, the planning board had a consultant working on it, and they drew the map, and we just didn't catch this. So this is really just correcting it so that the four Allen properties, who are now under common ownership, are all in the downtown district, which was the intent in 2021.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of Article 22, which is also two-thirds? All those in favor? All those opposed? The motion passes by two-thirds. Article 23.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws for section 6-3.3.4, general use zoning, section 6-3.3.4.9. Additional regulations as shown in Article 23 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This is a new section that we're proposing to add to the general use district. This is in response to not having residential districts in place after last fall's town meeting. And what this does is require a buffer between a property that goes from residential to a business use, so that if a property changes use from residential, so it was a residential use and changes to a business use, that neighboring residential, residential properties would have a buffer placed between them and the business use. And we already have a description in section 6-4, 6-6-4.2, that talks about screening, so this just refers to that. So this is just a, a measure that at least provides some protection for residential properties that are going to be next to a business property.
Zoning last year, and now we die by the death of a thousand cuts. This says, any expanded or new construction, so of existing business that wants to put a bump out on their garage or something, can be required to put an adequate or appropriate buffer between them and any residential properties. It's another expense on local businesses, and it's just, it's too much. It's, there's, there's no need of it. We just keep hammering the businesses, one after another, and I just don't see it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Those in favor, raise your card. This is two-thirds as well. Opposed? The motion passes by two-thirds. Article 24.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws, section 6-4.2, additional use requirements, as shown in Article 24 of the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This addresses ADUs, which are by right as of the 2nd of February in the state of Massachusetts. And what this does is put some guidelines around what would be considered ADUs in Essex, which these are all in accordance with what the state permits us to regulate. So there's one, we're, we're limiting it to one accessory dwelling unit per lot. The accessory dwelling unit shall meet the setbacks of the zoning district for the principal dwelling, and ADU shall not be used for short-term rental. We also have a definition of ADUs, which was voted in the fall town meeting, which addresses the septic and sewage requirements in the definition of the ADU, so that it's clear what is required in those respects. So this is really just keeping up with the state bylaw that's going into place and giving some guidelines for our community.
Any further discussion? This is a majority vote. All those, all those in favor of Article 24, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. That's a majority. Majority. It's Affordable Care Act, and Brendan, Greg could explain it, but it's part of the Affordable Care Act. Article 25.
I, Michael Flynn, move that the town vote pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E, one-half, to amend section 2-6, 26 of the town's general bylaws to establish three new revolving funds for the planning board, the conservation commission, and the zoning board of appeals, respectively, each for the purpose of paying advertisers for legal advertisements required for the work of each entity, as shown in Article 25 of the town meeting warrant, and to establish spending limits of $12,000, $8,000, and $8,000, respectively, for the fiscal year 2026, which sets spending limits to be applicable for each fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes prior to July 1st for the ensuing fiscal year to increase the same.
Is there a second? Discussion?
Sure. This is really administrative housekeeping. You want to advertise something or get a notice out as required by one of these boards. The advertisement is $200. It would come in, be paid out, and this administratively makes that functional. Now, it is not done in that way. It is simply a, a housekeeping to make, make sure that it works more functionally and better.
All those in favor of Article 25, raise your card.
I've got some less.
Quick question, please.
Can somebody explain, excuse me, sorry about that. I've got bad foot. Can somebody explain to me why we've got a $12,000 advertising limit for the planning board, eight for the other two? I was jamming for a long time. I mean, we'd rack up $1,000, $1,500 in a year.
I mean, we'd rack up $1,000, $1,500 in a year, and we were doing several subdivisions along the way in special permits. Just seems a bit excessive.
Ms. Zabricki?
My understanding is that with the recent changes to the zoning bylaws, there are going to be a lot more applications for special permits. And since that's the case, there'll be a need for a lot of throughput. Remember, this doesn't allow the planning board to accumulate $12,000 and just spend it on whatever they want. It simply pass-through. Someone pays for an advertisement. It gets passed through when the newspaper bills the planning board, and the money goes out. Otherwise, the way it is now, you have to have a budget built for the planning board to pay for all these advertisements, and it doesn't make any sense when you could just make it go from the applicant to kind of a waiting zone and then out to the newspaper.
Thank you, Brendan. All those in favor of Article 25, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. We are on 27.
I Peter Pippin move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to lease the property described in Article 27, the annual town meeting warrant said leased to be for a term of 10 years beginning on July 1st, 2025.
Second? Any discussion?
Briefly, this is about a less than 50 square feet of property on Woodman's Beach that apparently at, back when Tom Shays was being built, they built it on town property. So every 10 years, we lease it for 400 bucks? Something like that. Always 100-year?
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 27, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. You just slow in taking it down, Peter? Okay. Article 28.
I Alvin Guero move that the town vote to authorize the board of selectmen to lease a certain lot of town-owned land with the buildings thereon commonly known as the Legion Hall, located at 28 Main Street, assesses map 128, Lot 133, to a leasing, which will use the property primarily for the archiving and door display of historical materials and artifacts of the shipbuilding industry of the town of Essex for a term not to exceed 10 years, beginning July 1st, 2025, and upon such other terms and conditions as the selectmen may, in their judgment and discretion, so require.
Is there a second?
So I never knew it was the Legions, by the way.
Discussion?
Ralph, it's given 18 Main Street. How is the amount of the lease determined? I mean, my understanding is that this building was given to the Shipbuilding Museum in 1976. I think the rent is like $100 a year. I was just curious as to that, if we could sort of up that rate to more kind of 2025 market rates.
So the town meeting would give the authority for the selectmen to enter into the lease, and it would be up to the selectmen to determine what the terms of the lease will be. It has traditionally been a low amount of money, because essentially, the historical society is housing precious artifacts of the town of Essex, which we don't have a place to put anyway. It still remains a town-owned building, and essentially, you're getting an agency or a private organization to very carefully manage the artifacts of the town of Essex without any cost to the town.
All those in favor of Article 28, raise your card. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Article 29, Ruth?
I Ruth R. Prene move to indefinitely postpone Article 29.
All those in favor of indefinitely postponing, raise your card. Any opposed? Postponed, passed. Article 31.
Wesley Burn, 22 County Road. I Wesley Burn, a move that the town vote transfer from the Water Enterprise free cash, the sum of $73,176 to purchase a fully-equipped new pickup truck with plow for the water department to replace the water department's existing pickup, and anything incidental thereto, and further authorize the board to enter in any necessary agreements to effectuate the purposes of this vote and dispose of the old truck by sale or trade.
Is there a second? Discussion, Wes? No discussion? Good? Okay.
We're buying a new truck. The old was getting old and breaking down.
All those in favor of Article 31, raise your card. All opposed? Motion passes. Article 32.
Thank you. Hi Wesley Burn, a move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $9,499, to purchase a stand-up mower for the highway department and to replace one of the highway department's existing mowers. Anything incidental thereto, and further authorize the board of public works to enter in any necessary agreements to effectuate the purposes of this vote and dispose of the old mower by sale or trade.
Is there a second? All those in favor of Article 32, raise your card. Any opposed? The motion passes. Article 33.
I Wesley Burn, move that Article 33 be indefinitely postponed.
A second? All those in favor, raise your card. Opposed? Postponed. Article 34.
I Wesley Burn, a move that the town vote to transfer from the Water Enterprise free cash, the sum of $7,000, purchase and install a security camera or cameras at the water filtration plant, and anything incidental thereto.
Is there a second? All those in favor of Article 34, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Article 35.
I Ruth R. Prene move to indefinitely postpone Article 35.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing? Any opposed? Postponed. Article 36.
I Cliff Agaloff move that the town appropriate a reserve from fiscal year funds, 2026 Community Preservation Fund, estimated annual revenues or other available funds as specified on the Community Preservation Act at the town meeting handout, the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for open space reserve, historic resources reserve, community housing reserve, budget reserve, administrative expenses in special projects or transfers.
Discussion?
We appropriated funds for both now tennis courts behind Town Hall, and now other sports courts, racket courts over at Centennial Grove. And so now we have funds for both those projects, which are in the works.
I don't know if that's the right one.
You're going to say the handout says pickleball only. The handout says pickleball only, I've been informed. It can change if it's what we want it to be. Or 35 was indefinitely postponed. That's correct.
30, so was 35 postponed? Is that where-- Yes. So we're on 36. Community preservation funds.
Do you want it to be just pickleball? Or do you want to say something else? Because this is the only change. Pickleball.
36, right. Article 36?
36.
Go ahead.
Hi.
Hi, Annie.
Annie Cameron, Pickering Street. Can you, can you clarify the tennis courts at Centennial Grove item? Where is that? He just, but he just mentioned it.
There are no-- The tennis, the tennis courts are going to stay where they are, and they're going to be refurbished at some point.
Behind Town Hall?
Right.
And then, did you allocate money in this Article 37?
This is 36.
This is 36.
36.
36. For a separate allocation for pickleball courts up at the Grove.
Okay. Here's my question. Where is the plan for Centennial Grove? Like, where's the overall plan about what's happening there?
It's just an allocation. It's kind of a chicken and egg question. If there's no money to promise for it, then why would anybody draw up a plan?
Yeah.
So now there's some incentive for them to come-- There's a group in town that was interested in putting the pickleball courts and the tennis courts as part of a project behind Town Hall, and there were people who were objecting to the potential noise and disruption from pickleballs. So they wanted to move a potential nuisance of the pickleball up to the lake where there are Noah Butters.
Great. My concern is that often, we take permission from granting money to just take action. So, streetlights. We don't really do it well. I would like to know what the plan is before we allocate funds for Centennial Grove, because there's been a lot of change there. I don't know where those would go, how many trees are being removed. I think it's a fair question for taxpayers to say, what is the plan before we allocate funds to something? So I'm not going to vote for this.
Mark?
Mark Lynch, 16-hour County Road. I feel like I missed something in this whole process. When Mr. Agaloff read the motion, did we talk, did we say what the funds are being spent on?
Go ahead, Brendan.
Each year, when the Community Preservation article comes up, it always references a handout, which, which you have. And so the motion reader never actually reads the special projects. The motion reader just talks about the handout, and this year is no exception.
Okay, so the handout that I got after I sat down says 268, 352,000 fiscal year 2026 reserves and administration. Is that part of this?
Those are the allocations that are taken every year to set asides under the Community Preservation Act. And then there's always a section for special projects. It's done this way every year. The handout is provided at town meeting.
The, the handout then says 50,000 fiscal year 2026 projects.
Correct.
What are those projects?
For the pickleball, it's labeled as a pickleball court at--
Okay.
Yeah, it's on the reverse of the monetary summary.
The reserve transfers. Is anything happening with those, or are they just staying in reserve?
Reserve transfers?
The three, the 300-- 268,000.
Okay, each year, the Community Preservation Act requires the Community Preservation Committee to recommend how the money that's coming in through the surcharge is allocated. That is a standard handout, and they're just telling you that, because 10% of each of three major categories has to be set aside that way. That's no different than, than we do each year.
Well, other years, I've been really clear on what's being done. So to get pickleball courts at Centennial Grove, this is how we're doing it. Otherwise, the town, no one, the town really hasn't weighed in on that, correct?
The, only the board of selectmen, correct?
Only the board of selectmen?
Correct.
And on this handout, if you read both sides, you'll--
Well, and the Community Preservation Committee, because they voted to recommend it as well.
Okay. And when did they meet?
We met at 6 o'clock tonight.
Oh, okay. So this is almost happening real time. Thank you.
Well, the backstory was that, as I said, there were going to be combined courts, pickleball behind, behind Town Hall, and there was, people who advocated for the pickleball. If there is anybody here who was an advocate for the pickleball plan, they should speak now.
Mr. Martin, I'm not sure that's an appropriate--
Do you have a follow-up, Mark?
My only follow-up is, I think, I think we can all acknowledge that there's been strong opinions both ways about pickleball and the tennis courts being refurbished. Doing it this way, I'm really not comfortable with, and it does seem a little bit-- I know it's not intentional, but it's a little bit, whatever, sleight of the hand, but thank you.
Teresa Whitman, 8 Lufkin Street. So I just want to really clarify what I'm understanding. Do you need this vote to do both these things, to make these transfers and to appropriate this fund, or just one or the other?
Brendan?
This is an allocation for the pickleball courts.
Strictly that on this vote?
No.
It's the both? Okay.
An amendment could be proposed to vote only on the annual allocations, if that's what somebody wants to do. It's important to get the annual allocations done. It's just a regular matter of business.
Okay. So I will put in writing, but I would like to make a motion to vote on the annual allocations, but remove the appropriation for the pickleball courts.
Okay, so you want to amend by removing the 50,000 for the pickleball courts?
Yes.
I'll need that in writing. There's a motion to amend Article 36 to remove 50,000 from that article. Is there a second? Any discussion?
May I make my comment regarding that?
What's that?
Can I make my comment regarding that, or do you want--
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. It's okay.
My concern with, with pickleball courts up at the Grove is primarily that the summer camp uses the Grove so much in the summertime that a lot of the good useful hours, when it's not too hot and you can actually get up there and use it. It may be that that ends up being the best-case scenario for it, but I, I just don't want to sink the, the required vote that they need on this pickleball project that I'm not ready to support, because I don't understand the details better.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment?
Yes, I'm here to, Tom Daniel, Pond Street, supporting the amendment. I don't want to hold things up for CPA funds, but I'm not clear on the pickleball court plan, and I, part of what I'd like to know is what the total estimated cost is for the pickleball courts. The $50,000 is just a first allocation. The final cost is going to be significantly more than that. I think I'd encourage the folks, I'm not clear who's managing the pickleball court initiative, but I'd encourage them to maybe have a community meeting that's focused on the pickleball courts with a presentation, so folks could get their questions answered.
Brian?
Brian Ressler, 30 Choate. I'm going to echo quickly the call for a long-term plan for these pickleball courts, and say I support this amendment for that reason. Not only, you know, in the sense of, as Annie was saying, about where's it going to go in the trees and things like that, but we are simultaneously trying to rent the, those facilities out at Chewbacca Lake for weddings, and saying we're putting a pickleball court there at the same time, in the middle of that wedding, which might not be the best business idea of all time.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
I have a question. Is there any cost savings to have the tennis courts and the pickleball courts built on the same location? Because I've seen tennis courts have lines put up on them so they could be used alternately for pickleball. So my question is, is it fiscally more responsible to have them built together?
Go ahead, Laura.
Laura Doyle, 24A Maple Street. I play pickleball, and I started in Hamilton, because they had some courts. And now I play in Manchester, and they let me park there. If we put the pickleball courts up at Centennial Grove, am I going to have trouble inviting friends to play who aren't residents of the town? Is that going to be a problem? Are we going to let people come and play?
I'm going to answer all--
And park there?
Ruth will answer that.
So I came up to answer to a couple of the things that were said. So there is a plan about the pickleball courts. I wish that the person that had proposed it was here this evening. So this was actually proposed at the Community Preservation Committee at their last meeting, but the plan wasn't completely solid, so they asked them to come back with some more details and some more quotes. They're not in the room now, so I'm going to let you know at least what was presented. The location of the pickleball courts will actually be behind the field, kind of on the wood line. You will be able to use the pickleball courts when camp is in session, and the residents will be able to park down at Centennial Grove in the parking lot. It will not interfere with Camp Dory at all. So you'll be able to play pickleball even when camp is in session.
But can non-residents park there?
Non-residents can't go to Centennial Grove anyway. So it's residents-only at Centennial Grove.
So I'll be playing in Manchester, even though I have pickleball courts in Essex?
They can go as a guest, I'm told.
What's the parking situation?
They can go as a guest, and it would, it would be up to the discretion of the police to determine whether the guest is with an Essex resident. Okay, that's currently how it is.
All right. So I-- All right, so I, so I want to go back to the point that was made earlier. I think we should have the pickleball courts downtown where the tennis courts are, so everybody can play. I don't know, that's just my opinion.
I would like to just point out that...
This is about the amendment, we're on the amendment part, of just eliminating the 50,000 from your original article. Amendment or not?
This addresses the amendment.
Okay. He's going to speak about the amendment.
I just want to, I'd like to point out that we allocated $50,000 for tennis, the tennis court rehabilitation, I think in four or five years ago, if I'm not mistaken. And that money has been parked in the fund for the tennis courts while they develop the tennis court plan. So allocating the money doesn't mean we're spending it, it can be reallocated if necessary, we're just parking it and earmarking it for future use as pickleball courts down at the Grove. That's all that this is about.
Do you have a comment about the amendment to the article? Just the 50,000?
I think my comment can go to either the amendment or the original article. Meg Nelson, Belcher Street, I wanted to maybe explain to some people who are caught off-guard by this how we got here. And as Cliff said, a few years back, they allocated the CPA funds to refurbish the tennis courts down behind Town Hall. At that time, having just started playing pickleball, I advocated for, at the same time, painting lines and having pickleball there. Onea Butter opposed those plans due to noise that would be generated from a public park. So there was some fundraising that occurred, it kind of stalled, it sat there, time went by, project got more expensive. More recently, with the development of the new pavilion at Centennial Grove, the idea became, and it was floated earlier before, but discounted, the idea was thrown around, well, let's do pickleball up at the Grove, and all of the concerns that people brought up tonight about the camp and the parking, and it being outside of town, the center of town, people didn't want to do that. So now, when we went to the CPA meeting, they suggested that they had funding that they could allocate to both redoing the tennis courts downtown and doing either pickleball alone or a combination of pickleball and tennis at Centennial Grove. To me, it seems like a big ask, both projects, where all the money comes from, I'm not sure, remains cost-effective in my mind to just do the one project downtown. But here we are, and talking about both projects, so...
So the amendment is to eliminate $50,000 for the pickleball courts from that? All those in favor of the amendment, raise your card. Opposed? The amendment passes. So now we're back to Article 36, the main article. For what? Are you moving other funds around? The rest of, rest of the allocation is live, yes. So we're still on the regular article motion that you made?
So the rest of the article remains?
Correct.
I'm done.
All those in favor of Article 36, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article 37.
I, Peter Pippin, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $30,000 for the purchase, installation, and configuration of fiber optic network switches that interconnect various town offices and facilities, and anything incidental thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of Article 37, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article 38.
I, Jody Harris, move that the town vote to transfer the following sums of money totaling $18,133 from the following sources to purchase new weapons and ammunition for the Police Department and anything incidental hereto. Article 10 of the 2021 Fall Town Meeting, body cameras, the sum of $6,404.16. Article 1 of the 2018 Fall Town Meeting, VOIP telephone, the sum of $2,995.89. Article 26 of the 2024 Annual Town Meeting, police tasers for the sum of $6,786. Article 30 of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting, the sum of $1,813.60. And free cash, the sum of $133.35, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the old weapons by sale or trade.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'm going to talk about weapons. So when Chief Shamshak was appointed, he went through an inventory of what was needed in his department, and one of the things they had identified was that our weapons weren't the same as every other surrounding community's weapons, and they had been to some active shooter trainings. And we were in the process of budgeting for $3,500 to have those out-of-date weapons serviced. So he went out, got a proposal to have compliant weapons with other surrounding communities, and then we found old town meeting articles that had the approval of the prior chief, that they were completed articles to reallocate to the weapons. So it only cost us $132 of free cash, and the rest was sitting in an account.
Any further discussion? No. All those in favor of Article 38, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 39.
I, Nina McKinnon, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the following sums of money to defray operational expenses of the various town departments for the remainder of fiscal year 2025, for a total appropriation of $88,511. $22,322 for the Snow and Ice Department and the Department of Public Works budget. $18,000 for the FICA Medicare tax town share line item in the pensions benefits and other budget. $6,830 for the in-service training line item in the Police Department budget. $199 for the in-service training expense line item in the Police Department budget. $25,160 for the incidental overtime line item in the Police Department budget, and $16,000 for the firefighter salaries line item in the Fire Department budget.
Is there a second? Just any discussion? All those in favor of Article 30, raise your card. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Article 40.
I, Nina McKinnon, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $39,650 to replenish the Finance Committee's reserve fund for the remainder of fiscal year 2025.
Is there a second? All those in favor of Article 40, raise your card. Any opposed? The motion passes. Article 41.
I, Nina McKinnon, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $1,105 for the payment of unpaid bills from past fiscal years.
Is there a second? This requires four fifths. So, all those in favor of Article 41, please raise your card. Any opposed? Unanimous? Thank you very much. I believe... What? I'll take the, I think we're done. I'll take a motion to adjourn.